Totally different.
Okay, the, what is today? Today is August 17th, 2021. The August 17th, 2021 meeting of the Beverly Planning Board is hereby called to order. For the benefit of those here in council chambers and those who are joining us remotely, this is a hybrid meeting, hence some of us are here and some, at least participatory members, not necessarily planning board members, but some are joining us remotely. For those joining us remotely, please mute yourselves until such time as we call upon you. I'd note that virtual participation is also available via Google Meet. And if you go on to the planning board's calendar, you can find the requisite information to join us for the meeting. And we'll do...
Do we do roll call votes tonight?
We do not need to do a roll call vote because everyone is here in person.
Is here. Okay. What's that?
You mentioned BevCam too?
Yes, Bev, oh, yes.
Oh, and BevCam, I'm so sorry. No slight to BevCam, but this is being broadcast by BevCam. Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. Okay, our first agenda item is subdivision approval not required plan for 5 Netherton Avenue. Is the applicant available or his or her attorney or representative?
Ah, yeah. Virtual.
So Mr. Roger Smith is here.
I'm having trouble hearing you. The mic's close enough?
Oh, sorry, can you hear us, Mr. Smith?
Just barely, yep.
I'll send it up. Right now, somebody talk, right now.
Can you hear us better now?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, Mr. Smith, we'll turn the, turn this matter over to you and you can make your presentation.
I'm looking to subdivide, I guess, what is it, lot A and B into C and D now for H and B into four C and D to make a buildable lot in the back of my address at 5 Netherton Ave.
Oops, hold on one second, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go make this full screen. And members, the plan is also in your hard copy packet.
Okay, so it seems to me we have a, it's, this is not a straightforward A and R. We're looking at the subdivision control law and it talks about that...
I'm still having problems hearing you.
Okay. Every lot within the tract so divided has to meet one of three requirements. It has to be a public way or a way which the city clerk certifies is maintained and used as a public way. We know that the, the road is not a public way, so it does not meet that requirement. The second requirement is a way shown on a plan thereto fore-approved and endorsed in accordance with the subdivision control law. Or the third way is a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the city or town in which the land lies, having in the opinion of the planning board sufficient with suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting thereon. So I guess I would ask you, Mr. Smith, which one of these remaining two provisions do you think that your land meets?
Mine, well, I think it meets all of them.
Okay, well, it's, you agree it's not a public...
Now, the way my deed is written from 19 July 18th of 1988, it states that that private way will be treated as a public way.
What? I'm sorry, can you repeat that, please?
My deed that I sent Emily states on it that that private way is to be treated as a public way.
The private way is to be treated as a public way? Based on what?
So...
Go ahead, Emily.
It meets all the means of a public way is what it, I guess is what it states, being a private way.
But doesn't it? Did you want to add something?
Not at the moment, sorry.
Okay. All right, well, here's what we know. We know that this private way was created in 1976 as part of the Hiram Circle subdivision.
Correct.
And research on the part of, I think, the, the planning department establishes that, the notes from the planning board meeting, the subdivision at that time was approved with the understanding that the road would remain in an unpaved private way to which the city would not provide services and for which no circle, as shown on the plan, would be constructed. So the road has remained private and no circle was constructed.
Correct. And my land ends before the circle.
I'm sorry, your land what?
He said his land, his land ends before the circle.
Where the circle would have been.
But it's still a private way.
So because it's stated in the deed that it's treated as a public way, doesn't necessarily mean that it is certified by the clerk or it necessarily meets that under the subdivision control law. It means that it's stated in that way for the purposes of the deed.
Correct, which was in place before the Control Act went into effect, correct?
No. So the subdivision control law was created prior to the deed and the, and the subdivision was approved prior to the deed.
The subdivision was, but the Subdivision Control Act was approved in 93, wasn't it?
No, before that.
No, before that.
It may have been modified...
1954? I believe so. I want to say 1954.
So in order for me to put a house in down there, what would I need to do?
So, Mr. Smith, if it doesn't meet the subdivision, or if it doesn't meet the requirements of a subdivision approval not required law, it simply needs to go through the subdivision approval process.
Okay, but here's my, I'm only creating one lot. I have an existing lot. Actually, I've got two lots, I'm just changing lot lines down there to make a buildable lot.
We understand, but in order to do that, you need, you need, you're trying to get your approval through this method, and I think one of the things that we're wrestling with is we don't see how it meets these requirements.
It's got water, it's got sewer, it's got natural gas, it's got electricity.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Smith, but it has to meet the specific requirements of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81L. And I should have asked board members if you have any questions for Mr. Smith. I don't mean to be dominating this discussion.
Mine would be the same as yours, Madam Chair.
Mr. Smith, do you own that private way?
I used to.
Well, who owns it now?
Uh, well, I guess it's the new buyer, it's 5, or R 5 Netherton Ave.
I beg your pardon?
It's 5 R Netherton Ave that owns that private way, but it was in my hands from 70, or my fam, my parents' hands from 76 until 88, when I bought the house.
So the private way is owned by 5 R?
And that's the way it was set up so I could build a house out there eventually if I wanted to. And they were just doing those because I had the existing land already, that's why they had split the rest of the lots out back for my brothers to build.
Are there other questions, Mr. Smith?
No, I'm just...
Madam Chair, no, no question.
I, I'm sort of left with the thought that, as, as Emily said, that you may have to pursue other options in order to make that a buildable, um, arcer. You have to go through...
So we're gonna have to spend thousands of dollars to get it to be a buildable lot.
Well, if, if, I mean, you're, you've applied for this type of approval, we're struggling with how it meets...
Which I was told through my engineer and surveyor that it meets what I'm applying for.
Is your engineer here to, to talk to us?
No, it's Chris Mello, he's in Land Survey.
It doesn't meet the criteria.
So, Madam Chair, if, if the applicant doesn't want the board to vote, and it seems like the board might vote against it tonight, if he would like to further defend it and he would like to have his cer, perhaps, Mr. Smith would like to have his surveyor describe why he believes it meets the criteria prior to the board making a decision? Would, would that be something that you would consider and Mr. Smith would be interested in?
I think, I think that's actually a really good idea. Mr. Smith, how do you feel about tabling this for tonight, rescheduling it to our September meeting, having your engineer be available at that time, and he can answer some of our questions at that time?
Okay, can, it sounds fine, but what are some of the questions you're gonna ask him?
Ask him to take a look at Chapter 41, Section 81L.
Okay, what else?
And ask him how he believes that your subdivision or your plan meets one of the three requirements that is, that is set forth therein.
Okay.
All right?
Madam Chair, what's, what's the, if, if the applicant were to get denied, what are the implications and what's the potential if he withdraws his, his application? I just worry that he may not have the folks in the room with him that may be able to help figure this out. Is it worth him bringing in his engineer, maybe his attorney as well, in having a session?
That's what she's suggesting.
Right, and that's what we're suggesting now.
Okay, for outside of, I mean, I guess outside of the hearing or, or an application maybe, because this may or may not be the, the avenue for him.
Well, they're, they're always welcome to, I presume you're talking about having them contact the planning department directly?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're always free to do that, sure.
Yep, if, if we, if Mr. Smith and the engineer would like to have a conversation with the planning department and to better understand why the engineer thinks that this meets the requirements of an A and R plan and to hear what... And to hear what our concerns might be or what your concerns that have been expressed might be, he's welcome to do that.
Can I only bring that up outside of this forum, just, again, what are the implications of a denial, right? So say he decides to go forward with it, the board votes on a denial, what's, what are the implications? I don't want him to get hung up even longer than he needs to be.
So this is a fairly straightforward process. If the board determines that the plan does not meet the requirements of a subdivision approval not required plan, he simply needs to come in and, with the subdivision process, the complete subdivision process. And it's, there are no repercussions legally, there, there's no time limit and, or no time requirements that he might have to wait.
Okay.
He simply has to follow a different process. It's determined that this process is not appropriate for this property and that different processes.
Okay, that sounds good.
Do you need a motion, Madam Chair?
What's the date of our September meeting?
September 22nd.
Wow. Okay, I would welcome a motion on this, Ms. Flannery.
Madam Chair, I move to continue the hearing for 5 Netherton Avenue with the applicant Roger Smith to our meeting on September 22nd.
2021, right?
2021, thank you.
I have a motion by Ms. Flannery, is there a second?
Second.
Secuted by Mr. Miller, discussion on the motion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. So, Mr. Smith, my suggestion respectfully would be, and I, and I think Rodney makes a great point, have, if you have an attorney, if you have, I know you have an engineer, have them contact, first contact the planning department, maybe a conversation or two with them might be helpful, and then have them available via Google Meet or in person, whatever their desire is, on September 22nd, and hopefully we can resolve the matter.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, could I have a motion, please, to recess for a public hearing? So move. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Secuted by Derek, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're now in public hearing. Our first public hearing is modification to site plan review number 146-19, Zero Everett Street, the property at 17, I'm sorry, oh, 718 Hale Street, and the applicant is Zero Everett Street LLC.
Should we read the...
Oh, this is a public hearing, yes, for the first time, yes.
And I actually remember the public notice this time.
Yes, there we go, you're all over, girl. You're going missing.
So, the public notice, notice is hereby given that under the provisions of Section 300-98A of the Beverly Zoning Ordinance, the Beverly Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, during a public meeting that begins at 7:00 PM at Beverly City Hall, 191 Cabot Street, Beverly, Massachusetts, relative to modifications to site plan review application number 146-19, modifying the design of the exterior architectural features in the landscape. The petitioner is Zero Everett Street LLC, care of Alexander and Feminow, One School Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. The property is located at Zero Everett Street slash 718 Hale Street in the CN District and is shown on assessors MAP 37, Lot 90A. The application and file are, and plans are on file at the Beverly Planning Department and are available for public review.
Thank you. And just to recap where we are on this, board members will recall that at our last meeting, we were presented with, was it nine, 10, or 11 changes that the developer had made to the property that weren't or didn't correspond to the plan that had been, that had been approved by this board. The applicant at that time had asked us to determine that those changes were minor in nature, and that would have allowed us to move ahead that evening and vote to either accept the changes that the developer had made or deny the changes that the developer had made. This board voted and determined that the proposed changes constituted a major modification and therefore necessitated having a public hearing. And with that, that's sort of the update as to where we are, and I'll turn it over to Attorney Alexander.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the record. Tom Alexander with offices at One School Street in Beverly. So, we got a message from the board at our last meeting here, and acting upon that the applicant, Mrs. Skomerski, undertook, there were five matters that the Design Review Board recommended that there be reinstall, or installed into the, the, the project, and he has accomplished four of those, one being the gable details over the, the third story roof have been installed. He installed the horizontal banding, which is a shingle flare between the first and second floor. He installed plantings along Hale Street as, as they had recommended, and the, the flat, the flat panel was installed in the gable over the Everett Street entrance. The, now, the, the fifth item that the board, the DRB, had recommended was to extend the stone wall along Everett Street by an additional seven feet. And that is, and we'll present further information on that, but that is just, would result in a, the inability of one vehicle to get in and out of its space, that, that goes to the right-hand space on Unit 2. Just to refresh your memory, the, the original approval was not for a full, the original approval of this board and the DRB was not for a, a seven-foot wall to go out there, it was for a low-level planting. I believe, and I'll leave it to others to address this as well, but I believe that in retrospect, that does, it, it does not make sense, and I, and the owners of Unit 2, Kevin and Gretchen Fitzpatrick, have provided some information, photos, and design that just show you exactly why that doesn't work. The other modifications that the Design Review Board approved at their meeting on July 12th, we would respectfully request that the board follow the recommendation of that board, which I think you know, has some very qualified people on it, several architects and, and designers and people in the building trades, whose expertise has, you know, gone a long ways towards improving the appearance of, of buildings in the city of Beverly, and I believe that they believed that the, the modifications that they approved were aesthetically pleasing, and, and as I mentioned to you previously, the applicant, as well as the owners of Unit 1 and 2, have, have gotten a lot of positive feedback from neighbors on the design that, and the appearance of this building. So, it, the, I just would like to introduce, you know Mr. Skomerski's up, who's up front, Kevin and Gretchen Fitzpatrick are right there, they're the owners of Unit 2, I'm sorry, get it back, Unit 1, and the owners of Unit 2, AJ and Kim Pouschra are, are right here. So, the, I believe that the staff has visited the property and, and reviewed the changes. I think that they have, you know, come out very positively, and I would, I guess at this point, I would ask, Kevin, do you want to take the, the board through your concerns about the, the, the drive entry for, for your unit?
Actually, what I would prefer, Mr. Alexander, is what we did the last time, especially for the audience at home and those in the audience, let's, let's walk through each one of these changes, and then your, your homeowners or your condominium owners are certainly welcome to, to comment at that time, but I think it's important that we do this in, in an orderly fashion, and so that board members understand where we stand or where everything stands at this moment. So, board members, on the staff report that's been provided to us, it's been set forth as 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 11, 12, I'm sorry, 12 proposed changes. And that first change was the removal of the gable detail, so this is what the, the developer is now proposing, the removal of the gable detail panels above all third-story windows and above Everett Street entrance to be replaced with shingles. The Design Review Board's recommendation was to deny it, and your client has accepted it.
Accepted and completed it, yes.
Meaning that he has restored it, and it's in accordance with the plan?
That's correct.
All right.
I, I believe, Emily, I would defer to her as, as your representative, but I believe that she would concur in that.
Yes, that is correct. It, it has been completed as was approved in the previous, previously approved modification.
Okay. Do any board members, even though the, the applicant has restored this, do any board members have any questions for the applicant or their team with respect to this first proposed change?
If I, if I may, I just would like to say we withdraw that request, since we have, we, we're no longer looking for that modification.
Okay, so that's withdrawn. Okay. The second is on building, building, the removal of the horizontal banding between first and second floor on all elevations. The DRB recommendation was to deny that change, and your client has accepted it and has restored that horizontal banding, correct?
That's correct, and we would withdraw that request as well.
Excellent. Board members have any questions on that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just, not being, I've walked by the property, but not being an architect myself, I'm just wondering, Emily, was that to the specifications that were laid out by the DRB in the recommendations that were part and parcel of the approval of the modification?
That was, all of the architectural features in landscaping that have been restored were to the specifications of the Design Review Board and to the previously approved modification.
Okay, thank you.
And Emily, just, so I'm clear, there's no pictures of these restorations, you've just, what you've, am I missing them in here?
No, so we, I included pictures in the later parts of the staff report, so, so this is a picture of what it looks like today, so you can see the, the gables were restored above the third-floor windows, and you can see that horizontal banding about, between the first and second floor.
Okay.
Okay, and that, that has been restored, and so that request has been withdrawn. The third item is the use of Nantucket dormer instead of regular dormer window on the Everett Street facade. This is, this is, this is a proposed change by the developer that the DRB has recommended that we approve. I, I just want to make it clear that there's no obligation on this board's part to accept the recommendations of the, the Design Review Board, and that is not meant in any way, shape or form to denigrate anything that DRB does. We have enormous respect for the DRB, we rely upon them heavily, but this sort of discussion tonight has already been framed in light of the applicant asking us to accept the recommendation of the Design Review Board. And I'm a little reluctant to, to frame the issues in that way. I think the question really is, do we want these things restored or not, or do we want to accept the DRB's recommendation? But I don't think there's any obligation on the part of this board, one way or the other. I think it's fine if we do, I think it's fine if we don't. So, can we talk about this Nantucket dormer, please?
The, I guess, it, our, our feeling is that it aesthetically is, you know, accomplishes the same thing as the prior one, I believe the Design Review Board, not to be repetitive, but they, they believe that as well, and that it, it, it does not, the design does not in any way lessen the aesthetic appearance of the building.
What does, what does the, this is what the building looks like now without the...
That's correct, yes, yeah, and that, that...
The, the Nantucket dormer is a...
Sure.
That's... Is this thing in the back? Yeah, right up, right up there, you can see it.
That's, yeah, right up, right up there, you can see the, the, it's going right up here. And it's, by the way, it's that same design on the other side of the building as well.
Okay, do any board members have any questions for, Derek does, go ahead Derek.
Yes, so I can ask, so you're constructing the building, and you're building the framing, and you have the plans that were presented and approved and hashed out with the Design Review Board in particular. And so now we're, everyone's up there, when's the critical moment that the decision was made to disregard what was approved and make this, make this change? And was there any call to the Planning Department or anyone about the fairly substantial change in the look of this building?
For the record, Joe Skamerski, developer, who built the building. So when we were constructing the building and making that dormer, the framing didn't work to make the Nantucket-style dormer, which is like a shed, just like a dormer. So we had to continue it from side to side to make all the framing work. So, and that was like in November, late November, we were doing it, and, you know, it was just an overthought, and we ended up doing it this way to match the back. We were trying to get the building watertight, you know, and get the roof on. So that's how that ended up happening, but it wouldn't work with the framing of the building.
So it was a design flaw?
Yes. When the architect drew it, you know, it, you know, that was a schematic drawing that he had presented, but at that point, the framing plans were incomplete on the project. So, and at that point, we extended it to match the back half, which again, you know, we should have notified the board, it didn't happen, and that's where we are today.
Is this the first time that you've encountered a framing situation like that that wouldn't work?
It happens quite a bit, believe it or not, when you're building a building, this complex, and with all the jogs in it, and offsets, and different roof pitches and things, it does happen.
So in a situation, then, if it happens regularly, you typically then don't approach the body that made the approval on something to ask them permission to do that? You make it sound like this is something that you do all the time, away from the plans that were approved?
Right, but I mean, in this situation, you know, I should have called the board, we know where I didn't call the board, but in a different neighborhood or whatever where that's not required, then the changes are just made. But we ended up making the decision.
If I, if I could, and we're not, we're not suggesting that this was the right way to do it. I think that there was an expensive lesson that's been learned here. But just, just to keep in mind that it is in keeping with the exact design of the, on the other side of the building that was approved. So I think that there was probably, I wasn't there, some feeling in the field that, you know, it's symmetrical, it's in keeping with what's already been approved on the other side of the building.
Wayne?
It's also the same as the, the two windows, the Nantucket dormer below it, right? Isn't it, there's two windows above and then there's two below?
Right.
And they are the same, I think?
Mm-hmm.
So they match that as well as matching the backsides. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody from the public who wishes to be heard on this, on this proposed change? I'd rather do it this way than do the back-and-forth later on. So whether it be any of the unit owners or anybody from the public? Go ahead, I'm sorry, Emily?
I'll let the property owners speak.
Yeah, so Anthony Boonstra for the record. So to me, the change actually is quite appropriate because it matches the other parts of the building. If this dormer was different than the others, it would look a little bit strange on the building. Ever since we've moved in, people in the neighborhood have been extremely friendly and welcoming to us, which has been, which has been great. And I'd say, you know, when I'm working in the garage or in the yard, about 70% of the people that walk by actually stop and introduce themselves and say hello, and they all are very complimentary about how the building came out to every single person. So it's basically 100% of those that have stopped by have been very pleased with the way it came out. Several had expressed concern about how it was originally going to look with the commercial space and everything else. And they were, you know, expressed to me that they are quite relieved with how it is now and that they're, they're quite satisfied with the way it was and that it is quite an improvement over the vacant lot that was there that had a lot of overgrown vegetation around the edges and everything else, and how this is a proper building to be right there in the main street of Beverly Farms.
Thank you, Emily, did you want to offer a comment?
I'll let the other property owners.
Okay.
Hi, Kevin Fitzpatrick. The only thing I would comment is from the interior, there's also symmetrics. Now, I can't speak about whether the exterior of the design has a, has a change in the interior, but it does make both of the bedrooms much more symmetrical. The windows looking out provides another opportunity that, again, I presume would have been compromised in the old format. So from the interior, we're appreciative of the new design, that's all.
I have a couple of general comments submitted by two Design Review Board members.
Okay.
So first I'll read the letter submitted by Sandra Cook, chairperson of the Design Review Board at 23 Broadway, Beverly, Massachusetts. It reads, "My apologies for not being able to attend tonight's meeting in person. I'm speaking as the chair of the DRB and not on behalf of any other members of the DRB. I think it's safe to say that the majority of DRB members were disappointed when we saw the finished building at Hale and Everett Street. Lacked several of the architectural and landscape details that we had worked so hard to incorporate into the design and had recommended be approved by the Planning Board. These details were meant to make the building fit in with the local vernacular and also to help visually reduce the scale of the building and add interest and curb appeal. We were also not impressed that the developer seemed to minimize the importance of the changes when he did come back to have the changes approved at the request of local officials. It is important that the work of the DRB be respected and the processes be followed, otherwise, quote-unquote, what's the point? However, having said that, and after looking at the building today, the developer seems to have made a sincere effort to bring the building back to what was originally approved, and he has done all of the items the DRB requested at its last meeting, except extending the stone wall. The shingle flare is now in place, and it looks great. The gable ends have the original trim details, and the entry roof has been panelized as we requested. I am personally satisfied with the effort that has been made to get us back to where we started. The issue with the stone wall is something I think the DRB may have made a mistake on. We were working off of plans on paper, and when seen in real life, extending the stone wall will in fact make it difficult for cars to enter and exit the right side of the garage. The idea of extending the wall was precipitated by a photograph of a car parked parallel to Everett Street, to the Everett Street half of the sidewalk, which I don't think would be allowed to happen because it is a parking violation. I think the stone wall is a nice feature on the corner that was not actually in the original plan but is a fortunate change. In summary, I think that the building we have now is attractive and very close to what was intended. I also think the developer is now well aware of the importance of following the DRB's approved recommendations. I hope that the Planning Board approves the building and landscape in its current form." And the second letter is made, was written by Caroline Mason at 583 Hale Street. It reads, "Madam Chair and members of the Planning Board, my name is Caroline Mason, and I live at 583 Hale Street in Pride's Crossing. I am speaking as an individual member of the Design Review Board. Thank you for bringing this case to the attention of the public. Going forward, it may be a signal to any developer who does whatever it takes to obtain through appropriate boards a plan's approval and then decides to bypass established procedures and make whatever design changes he or she wishes in order to enhance the project's bottom line will face substantial consequences." And that is the end.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, does anybody else wish to be heard on this change number 1, 2, 3, the use of the Nantucket dormer? Okay, let's move on to the next one, which is the solid deck rail with cedar shakes replacing wood slat balusters on the north facade decks. My understanding is that the DRB liked this change and approved it.
Yes, I can speak to that, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Very much so.
What was there before? What did the original plan call for?
Balusters, like posts.
Oh, there it is, replacing wood slat balusters, right?
Yeah.
Okay, are there any questions on this? Okay, anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this? All right, we'll move on to the next one.
If I, if I may, just the reason for that is that it is in keeping with the shingle style of the building, but also it provides the owners with greater privacy because of their decks that are overlooking the neighboring property, so they, it gives them greater privacy for that.
Mr. Alexander, is it possible that the reason why the original plan called for wood slat balusters was to break up the, to break up the extensive cedar shakes?
I don't know frankly, Madam Chair, what the reasoning was on that, but I do, I do know that it works very well for the owners of the property and that the Design Review Board liked it as well.
Okay, thank you. The next one is, we turn now to, we turn away from building changes and we turn to the landscaping changes. This first change for landscaping, which is fifth on your list in terms of the number of changes, is to remove the approved plantings along the southern perimeter and replace with lawn. And the DRB's recommendation was to deny this.
And the developer has done that, has put that in, and has withdrawn that request for modification.
So that has been restored to its original?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and that's withdrawn as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, excellent. Let's move on to the next one, landscape number 2, add 2-inch caliper honey locust tree at the southwest corner of the property and modify the low plantings at the corner, adding stone wall between tree and sidewalk. Do we have a before and after? Yeah, before and after?
So this is the after. And... No bother, one moment, please.
That's okay. Mr. Alexander, I wonder if you could explain, what was the thought process behind these, this change? Or these changes, I guess there's two in there.
This one, Joe, here.
Here we go, the tree.
Add 2-inch caliper tree.
Right, so we just added a tree on the corner to mimic the one that is on the Everett Street side, on the, I would say, the left side of Unit Number 2, there's the same type of tree, so we put one in the corner there. Before too, when it was a parking lot, there was a big light utility pole there with lights on it and everything, which was a lot bigger than what that tree is.
So basically, this is an addition, an additional element to the, what had been approved, to provide symmetry to the property, there's another similar tree at the other corner.
So this was what was previously approved, and it's all just low, low plantings in this corner. Correct, shrubs and flowering plants.
And a tree.
So there is no tree that was previously proposed.
And the change says modify the low plantings, how were the plantings changed, Mr. Alexander?
Joe, do you want the, the, the low plantings at the corner, how were those?
Well, because the wall was supposed to be extended more, those were where the low plants were going to go. So that wall that got eliminated, that we're going to be talking about in a minute, those were the low plants. I think they were the rust. So those got eliminated with the wall, the low plants.
Modify low plants?
See, these low plants were eliminated.
Is that where the, where the honey, the 2-inch honey locust went in?
Is right there as well, right.
Okay, yeah.
So their low plants got eliminated because the island got eliminated for access to the garage for Unit 1.
Okay, and the Design Review Board has recommended approval of this change, correct, Mr. Alexander?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any questions, Derek?
As I remember the conversation, one of the reasons for the low plantings at the corner was for sightlines for traffic coming off of Everett Street in particular. And with this tree, if, you know, forgive me for not being an arborist either, but I want to make sure that the tree itself isn't going to be blocking any sightlines, any of the foliage leaves, dropping branches, anything like that, that would make it more difficult for traffic at that intersection.
I believe that because the trunk goes up and people are down and the seatness is somewhat elevated, that it does not interfere with sightlines going through.
But it's not the type of tree that would droop down or come down into, towards the ground?
I don't believe so, no.
No, honey locust does not do that.
Does not, okay. I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Okay, other questions regarding this proposed change from members of the board?
Just a comment.
Sure.
I'd just like to emphasize the importance of incorporating native trees and vegetation because of the impact of, their impact on indigenous birds and pollinators, and I hope that everybody's well aware of that and that was taken into consideration.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Can you help me understand your comment, is this tree not native?
I'm actually not familiar with these, and I don't know if they are.
I'm not either, that's why I was just curious, if I was supposed to know. Okay.
I don't.
Okay, there's going to be a test.
Okay, does anybody from the public, either here with us in chambers or joining us remotely, wish to speak about this proposed change?
Madam Chair?
Yes. You name and address for the record, please?
Peter Johnson, 677 Hale Street. I'm speaking specifically with respect to the tree and the corner and the low plantings. And I guess I can address the extension of the stone wall, or the extension of the wall further into the driveway. I think the, well, first of all, let's address the tree. As Derek mentioned, there was a lot of concern about sightlines as people coming down Everett Street looked at Hale Street. It was also a matter of schoolchildren picking, meeting the bus there and wanting it to be accessible, visible, so that the kids would be accessible, would be visible. And I think the developer with both the tree, which is tall enough so that you don't have to scrunch down to see where the traffic is coming from, I think that's fine. And I think the plantings that he has there now are both attractive and low enough so that the kids will be okay. And personally, I had been concerned about extending that wall, and in discussions with the DRB, after looking at the situation further, seeing how the cars would have to turn, personally, I'm okay with the wall ending where it does. I think they've done a nice job with the rest of the changes as well.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anybody else in the public wish to be heard on this?
If I, if I may, Madam Chair, I just wanted to address Mr. Miller's comment. So honey locust is native to Central North America and as far east as Eastern Massachusetts.
Okay. Okay, and you are requesting that we approve the change made by the developer, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The next one is to, was the removal of the bluestone path from the Hale Street entrance to the Everett Street driveway. And that's just the lawn now, correct?
That's correct, with, with shrubbery on either side of it.
And why was the bluestone path removed?
The, originally, that was kind of a leftover from when it was the original plan to make a commercial use on the first floor, and that was intended to be a walkway from that commercial use out to the, so... commercial use out to the, the, so patrons, et cetera, could walk from the, the front entrance to the commercial use in front of the building and into the parking lot. And now that it's a residential, it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. And it actually, you know, if I may, it, it looks pretty good with the lawn there and no, no walkway, so.
Okay, questions from members of the board regarding this proposed change? Derek?
So I do remember this conversation from when we were doing the modification from the unit with the commercial to, to what hopefully is the existing now. And part of the discussion about that walkway was that, that the main entrance to the home was on Everett Street, that the main entrance to the home wasn't going to be on Hale Street, and therefore having the Hale Street entrance made more prominent, more important and more in fitting with other properties in the area that have more stately entrances on Hale Street. There was a specific discussion about the fact that this was really a secondary entrance and, you know, that it was really gonna be through the driveway. So I, I wanna just come back to the fact that this was part of the argument not to have a stately, more appropriate, at least in my opinion and other members of the public's opinion, entrance on Hale Street and a way of toning it down. And so to now say that, that walkway, you know, turns out we don't need it, things like that, is to obfuscate a little bit the fact that this was used as a cover, in my view, as a reason for not putting more attention to the Hale Street entrance. And so, I don't know, I, I just, I think it's sort of convenient filler right now to say that the walkway isn't there. That's not to say I never thought that there was that much, enough space for a walkway in that, in that particular spot. I mean, it was very crowded because the design was brought so close to the road, which was another point of discussion. So, I don't know, it just, it seems more like a cost-saving measure at this point than it does any sort of design measure, and I just, you know, have difficulty with that at this point in time.
Well, you make a good point about the narrowness of the path because you've got plantings on either side. It's questionable whether it would, it would get much, if any, use. From, from a, you know, from a design perspective, it is, it balances, you know, the, it's symmetrical. You know, if you look at the, at the, at the building, as you face the building, the right side has a lawn and, and, and the left side, as presently constituted without the bluestone walkway, also has a lawn. So it kind of, you know, I think makes a nice presentation that it's symmetrical, each side is balanced, you know, as opposed to having one side lawn and one side bluestone lawn.
And, and all that said, presenting that plan without the walkway to us probably during that review would have called more attention to the fact that the entrance should be more stately and more in fitting with Hale Street. And so I'm just saying that it's convenient arguing at this point in time that it's a better look when that was used to undercut the idea that this was not, or present, that this was not a Hale Street house, that this was an Everett Street house, when it is indeed a Hale Street house.
Was, this was approved by the design board, right? The removal of the?
Yeah.
Yes, this was, the design review board recommended accepting this modification.
Yeah. After the fact.
Right.
After the fact.
Okay, all right, but.
I'm just, I'm, I apologize if, if, you know, members of the board might think it's a little tedious, but, but I think it's important for us to have this hearing, actually pay attention to what the discussions were before and what we heard were the developers' reasons for this and that, and now we're hearing different wording and different phrasing and different examples of what looks good and what doesn't look good, when, you know, these things were all on the table back then. And now it looks good to have a Hale Street entrance that doesn't have a side walkway, have a walkway because it's the main entrance on that side of the house. So, I'm just, just saying.
I agree.
Just saying.
Just saying.
It sounds like we're getting into a deep-level design conversation, and I'm just, is this the place? I mean, that's places for the design review board? And I, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just bringing that up.
Well, no, and I, I agree in it, and part of the discussion that we had for this, this building, both times it came before us, for, were specifically the concerns of the community to have something that had no building there for decades, and now a, a big square right to the edge of the property building. There were a lot of concerns and discussions about the changes that would be made and a lot of work by the design review board, but also a lot of attention by members of the public and the planning board. And so these were all important discussions that we had that were disregarded. So I think it's important to put that out there.
I agree, and I would just say, Mr. Sinclair, that I don't think certainly the, the overall design and, and that sort, I would agree with you, falls under the purview of, of the design review board, but I don't think it's mutually just theirs. I think that, that we have the opportunity, we had the opportunity, we looked at this, we approved a plan based on what DRB had suggested, based upon a lot of discussion, as Derek just said, and then as we've discussed, the plan was radically changed. So I think having this discussion about those changes, as tedious as it might be, and, and it is, it's important.
I just, I'm, yeah, maybe, I, I, this, this part was approved, I'm, I'm just, I think we can, honestly, I just think maybe we can move on to the next one and try to get these guys through. I personally, I, I, I understand a little bit of what the developer had gone through. I know that these changes on the field happened very quickly, there's a lot of, you go from schematic plan, you know, to the real construction on the ground. And I said this before, I mean, I, I don't think that a lot of the changes we personally like, you know, but, I don't know, I just, I think, you know, we're here to, to talk about the modification, so I'm, I just brought that up and I'm just, I just pushed a little bit on that.
That's, and that's fine, I, I respect that. All right, so, let's, go ahead, Wayne.
First of all, I, I think that the, the approved design certainly is within the purview of this board, otherwise we wouldn't be having this discussion. As you said earlier, it's, the design review board weighs in, and we certainly respect their opinion, but it also falls within our purview, so this is a perfectly appropriate discussion to be having.
Absolutely.
Tedious as it most certainly is. Secondly, the discussion really, a lot of it centers around what has been earlier referred to tonight as the local vernacular. It's a pretty good term, I think, to describe what we're talking about. Does it fit the, the, the message of what that area of town has always been? That is within our purview. And the front-facing Hale Street, whether or not that, that elevation is appropriate or fitting to the local vernacular certainly is part of our purview, and this discussion of whether the bluestone versus lawn is, is appropriate and fits the requirement is, is a worthy discussion. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the audience who wishes to be heard on, on that, on that particular proposed change?
Yes, we have.
So I guess, you know.
I'm sorry, sir, can I ask you? Every time you come up, I just, I'm sorry.
Anthony Boris for the record? So with, I'm not, I wasn't obviously a part of the discussions that happened previously regarding this, this change, so I don't have the benefit of what that conversation was. Only thing I can say is that now as it looks with the additional plantings on that south side of, of the property, it's very symmetrical, it draws you towards the door, it does give the door on that street more emphasis so that it fits better, in my opinion, to the, you know, to the, to the community. In addition, adding hardscape to any landscape design means that you're gonna be increasing the amount of storm runoff, and in order to minimize the amount of runoff that goes into the, the storm drain system, having more grass there is beneficial to the, to the design of the property.
Okay, the next one. The next proposed change is change twenty Emerald Green arborvitae five feet tall on, on the eastern perimeter to five Bradford pear trees higher than ten feet tall at planting. This was approved, the DRB has recommended that we approve it, and I'm wondering what drove, what drove that change?
Again, the arborvites were part of the plan that was approved from the commercial spot for the glare of the lights gonna, that, that back pot was gonna be a parking lot, and then when we did a modification, we left it without thinking about the building next door. After we got the building constructed, when you look out the balconies, you're looking right into the next door neighbors' windows and everything, there's absolutely no privacy. So as you know, on the backside of the building, we put the six Armstrong maples that were the discussion between the neighbor and us for privacy for her, so why can't we have privacy for the other abutting neighbor on the other side? And after talking to the landscaper, we decided not to put the same trees because A, those trees were hard to get with the pandemic came. We had all we could do to find the Armstrong maples for that side, so we decided to change it up with something different. So that's why we decided to go with the Bradford pears, plus they grow pretty quickly and will give privacy, you know, to the two units as well. The arborivite trees, by the time they get big, it'll be ten, fifteen years and would have no impact at all. So that's why we made that change.
Questions from members of the board regarding this proposed change?
Yes, please.
Wayne?
Could you just comment, obviously, the, the pear trees are seasonal versus arborvitae's, which would be there year-round, right?
I didn't, I.
The question was that, that the arborvitae's are evergreen year-round and these are deciduous to lose their leaves. Yeah, that's correct. That's, but the, just keep in mind, one thing, that the, first of all, the privacy is, is really engineered towards when people are outdoors.
Mr. Alexander, we are, microphone.
Sorry, sorry. The, the privacy, the, the privacy impact is really when people are outdoors, which is when the, 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 the trees have their leaves. Also, the, the, it called for five-foot-high arborvitae's, so that, that's gonna take a lot, a lot of time before those get tall enough to really have any screening impact, whereas the, the Bradford pears, how tall are those, Joe?
Like twelve feet.
Which are already twelve feet, will have an immediate impact.
Yeah, not, not to quibble, but arborvitae's do come higher than five feet. You can get bigger ones.
But, but no, but that's what the, that's what the, the, the design review board approved, five-foot-high arborvitae's.
That didn't stop you.
I know, I'm just, just saying to quote.
For a total of twenty, Mr. Alexander, am I correct?
Yes.
Twenty arborvitae.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else wish to offer comment, question? Anybody from the public?
Did you want to speak? I, I, I mean, this, Mr. Fitzpatrick just has a photo that he didn't submit, it just shows what the trees look like.
Mr. Alexander, we have to have you with the microphone, please.
Mr. Fitzpatrick just has a photo here that he did not submit to the board, but that shows the, the trees and their height presently. I don't know if that's of interest to the board?
It's of interest to me. And those, I assume will fill out in the next eight to ten years? If I had to guess?
Based on.
You did not send that to a gentleman, correct?
Correct, correct. So, no, based on the growth of Bradford pear trees in the city, I would assume they would fill out in the next two to three years.
Thank you.
The Bradford pear tree, by the way, is the, the preferred street tree in Beverly. I think part of the reason is because you get, you know, color in the spring, you get white blossoms, and the leaves turn red in the fall, and they're pretty hardy in the urban environment.
But these aren't street trees here, are they?
No, they're not.
Okay.
But they are in a semi-urban environment.
How close would the twenty arborvitae have been situated together?
Twenty versus five?
Three to four feet apart. Three to four feet spacing.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a question?
Yeah, just really similar. Are they significantly different in size? So it seems like five, twenty trees to five trees is a big difference in just number of trees, but if they're a different size, is, it would be helpful to know.
Well, the arborvites are like a bush, you know, so you plant them three or four feet together and eventually they make a hedge.
Right, okay.
Where a tree is taller and they got a bigger canopy, and they'll form like a wall of privacy.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you, Derek?
Yes, I'm wondering if you could tell me the cost difference between twenty arborvitae's and five pear trees?
Would the cost difference between twenty arborvitae's and arborvitae's, I'm not sure. I'd be guessing what the cost is.
At this point, I'd be guessing, yeah, what the cost is, you know? So, of the, because I, I really don't know what the arborvites cost at this point, but the trees were like five or six hundred bucks a piece, for the trees.
So I actually just had some five-foot-high arborvitae's installed, so the, the plant installed was seventy-five dollars each. So that's, the math there is twenty times seventy-five is fifteen hundred dollars, right? Does that sound right?
Yeah.
No math major?
Yeah, no, seven fifty and seven fifty, so if, yeah.
And Joe was saying that the, yeah, the, the Bradford pears went for how much each?
Five hundred.
So five hundred each, so that's twenty-five hundred. So it would be more expensive actually to have the Bradford pears.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that proposed change? Okay, let's move on. This, the next one is the change of the bluestone walkway on the northern portion of the site to pave a walkway.
So the, the thought process on that is that the, that the patio on the, on the, around the corner here is, is done with pavers, so this would just be in keeping with, with that design that's already approved and in the ground.
Questions, comments from members of the board? Questions, comments from members of the public? Okay, next one, landscape number six. Shift six maple trees on the northern perimeter of the sites, of the site slightly east, modify the stone wall and add six rose bushes to northwest corner. Setting aside the shifting of the six maple trees, were the maple trees what was originally proposed?
Yes.
Okay. What was the modification to the stone wall?
So the, the stone wall, it came along the back of the property, along the, the, the neighbor immediately on Everett Street's property, and there's a jog in when it gets to the parking lot, and then, so it, it, it allows more snow storage, but it's the same wall, it's just with a, a jog inward.
But this is, if I may, a photo of what we're talking about. So here's the, the stone wall and a jog in this way it goes over the, uh, the street.
Thank you. Questions, comments from members of the board on this proposed change? Questions, comments on this proposed change from members of the public?
Hold on, and that jogs, and that provides more snow storage.
Name and address, please?
Kevin Fitzpatrick, um, we, we think it makes more sense for the removal of the snow. It's a, it seems like a smart design for what we anticipate out of New England weather being.
Thank you. Number seven, change the low-lying plantings at the northwest corner from shamrock and lirio spicata to lily turf. Reasoning?
This is, this is landscape, we're on landscape seven, Madam Chair.
Landscape seven, yes, thank you.
Change the low-lying plantings at the northwest corner from shamrock and lirio spicata to lily turf.
Reasoning?
This is, this is landscape, we're on landscape seven, Madam Chair.
Landscape seven, yes, thank you.
Change the low-lying plantings at the northwest corner from shamrock and lirio spicata to lily turf.
Well, because we, we didn't add that, um, the wall was cut back. The planting bed was cut back in, in that section. It's just a, this is, no. Okay, so the, because the, because the planting bed was cut back and made smaller, so they got eliminated. I think you're talking about, yeah.
This is him. This is the asbils.
This is the, the, let me see. I think you're talking about this.
Which one are you talking about?
So this was, this was sharpened up as well. So, so, so this?
Which one is that? Which one are you talking about?
So there's just some plantings of this size?
Questions from members of the board regarding this proposed change? Question from members of the public, comment from members of the public regarding this proposed, proposed change? Okay, the last one is number eight, remove the plantings bordering the sidewalk in front of the garage bays. And I note under the DRB recommendation, they have a modify condition five, extend the stone wall from Hale Street, seven feet along Everett. I'm wondering if you can deal with those, Mr. Alexander?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Um, so the, uh, i- if you recall, the chairman of the DRB wrote a, a letter saying that that was, that, that, that wall was, uh, mistaken. It was based on, uh, o- old information, and that in retrospect, it does not make sense because, and we'll have, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick, what can show you a diagram. You can't get the, if you put that, that wall, seven, that, that wall seven feet into the driveway, you can't get the car out on the, as you face Everett on the far right. It, it, it's just too much of a, of a turn. So the, uh, and, and the, uh, and the, the DRB also, uh, approved the removal of the, the, the same, uh, piece coming out, uh, for the same reason, on the other side of the driveway. So they, they approved one, and they did not approve the other, but then I believe, a- a- at least on the chairman, on, in retrospect, and having gone out to the property, uh, realized that, uh, it does not make sense. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Johnson, I believe, also made the same point. The, uh, I'd also like to point out to you that-
Your private reason was, uh-
Sorry, I can point.
Okay, so if along Everett Street-
Along, along, you can't teach old dogs new tricks. Um, along Everett Street, the, there is actually right where this would, would, would occur, there's already a sign that says, "No parking," uh, in that, in that area. So I, I, I think originally, the thought might have been that the, the wall would, would keep someone from parking there, but in, in, in actual matter of fact, you can't legally park there along the street anyways because of the, uh, the, the street sign saying, "No parking here." Kevin, did you want to?
Go ahead, Ellen.
No, Madam Chair, I was just going to speak to the fact that truly, there were pictures taken, Mr. Alexander, of cars parking right there, on the sidewalk.
Right.
And that drove part of why that, that wall was recommended, because there were cars parking where they shouldn't park.
Right, and, and is it-
And it was more of a guarantee that they wouldn't continue to do it.
And, and it would turn out that, in fact, that was illegally parked there, and so that it can be rectified by a call to the police department, either ticket or tow.
And that's why I'm looking at it, as we did at the, the DRB.
Right, I understand, yeah.
Thank you.
Questions, comments from members, Derek?
I also do remember, um, the conversations about the driveway configuration when we had, um, our hearing, um, the, went to approve this, um, this design modification. And there was question about, you know, whether or not two cars would be able to fit in, to park in those areas with the wall, and how were people going to be able to, um, do that? And, um, it was strongly defended, um, by your client, Mr. Alexander. Um, and, you know, to the point of saying that mathematically it was, uh, possible that cars could come in and out, it was not an issue, the design worked. And now, so this is another question I guess I have, is that the specific schematics that were provided to us were the, um, the dormer, which turned out not to be able to work, and this turned out not to be able to work. So you presented another design flaw.
Excuse me, before you respond, Mr. Alexander?
Yeah.
I think Emily would like to add.
I can speak to this just a little bit. So, um, I attended the design review board meeting, um, and I'd say the seven-foot requirement was, I wouldn't say arbitrary, but it was based on my comment on how long I thought it, the, what was previously approved went. That said, um, my spatial recognition, there's a reason I'm a planner and not an architect. Um, and I believe I was rather off on how far the plantings that were approved in the previous plan went, and I think the seven feet goes far beyond that.
Yeah, my discussion, though, was at the planning board, it wasn't at the DRB. And it was the questions I had to the developer about whether or not the configuration with the wall was gonna work. And we were told that it was going to work. And now it's not. And so I'm just raising that to say, I understand this, and most likely, I'm gonna support this the way that the, the design review board is suggesting it. But I'm saying to present a plan and argue for it and say that it can work technically, make that argument to us not once, at least twice in these plans is concerning to me.
So, i- if I may just, uh, address that for a second, a couple of things. One, uh, there, there was never a wall there, it was gonna be planting, so that, that, that was a little bit of miscommunication at the DRB. But the other thing, you know, a- and again, the, the, the process here on our part could have been a lot better in terms of communication, we acknowledge that. Um, but I would, um, direct your attention to, there's always a certain amount of tension and conflict between designers and builders. Uh, there's a famous book, uh, the name of it is "House" by Tracy Kitter, and it's about, uh, a family building a house, and a lot, a big part of it is, has to do with the conflict between a design, and then when you go to try to build it, it doesn't come out like the design you thought it was gonna be. So unfortunately, these things happen, uh, but, uh, and, and, and so, but I will absolutely acknowledge that they happen. It should have been addressed with this board way before this. We, we, we understand that and apologize for that.
I, I appreciate that, Mr. Alexander. Um, my one question, um, my one other question would be, in terms then of being able to make the pivot, there'll be some additional movement beyond the curb cut into the sidewalk area? And I'm just wondering, or worrying, a little concerned about, you know, pedestrian safety, schoolchildren's safety, et cetera, um, for, for something is gonna, where cars are gonna be swinging on and off the sidewalk outside of a curb cut? Just, just a, a question about, a- and again, it probably most likely comes to fitting such a large building, you know, all the way to the max of the lot dimension, so I understand the struggle there.
Thank you, yeah. I, I just would like to, to, to say that the, the, uh, the building itself was built to all the zoning requirements, uh, for the, for the city, uh, for that location, so there were no variances or special permits or anything else that were granted.
Right up to the line, I understand.
Okay, great, thank you.
Wayne?
I just, I, I guess I'm just commenting on the, what, what Derek is saying, that this process involved a degree of audacity, frankly, in coming to the, to the board and saying, "Please forgive us." And I think we, we acknowledge that, and we are, uh, it caused us a great deal of tedium in reviewing things that we shouldn't have had to review all over again. It caused a great deal of, of, of time burden on the board, which was certainly avoidable. Um, and we're, I'll speak for myself, we're somewhat insulted by the process. That's what I think we're, we're saying. Acknowledging that, I, at this point, have no problem with any of these, uh, changes. I think we're in the place we should have ended up. It's just unfortunate that it, we went a very long way around the dormer to get here.
I couldn't agree with you more. Um, I would suggest, uh, you know, the, uh, the, 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 the board has had to spend, uh, an awful lot of time on modifications, uh, over the last couple of years, and, and I'm not sure exactly, uh, how, but it, the, it would be great if the, the folks in the field, the assistant building inspectors, you know, they're very good on code matters, if they, you know, were, you know, maybe given, you know, a little, um, instruction, a course in the, you know, with the design review board and, and, uh, planning board and site plan review and what it means and how important it is, and maybe talk about some procedures, uh, going forward for, uh, to, to make this kind of stuff not happen again, and as much as it does. I mean, it, it happens really more than it should, and, um, I, I just, it's just a thought, it's neither here nor there, but just something to think about going forward.
Okay, any other questions or comments regarding this proposed change from members of the board? Comments or questions regarding this proposed change from members of the public? Okay, that concludes the, uh, the review of the proposed changes. Before we, do we have any letters or anything like that from, um, city departments?
No.
Other than DRB?
The design review board was the only one that wrote the letter, because they were all design changes. They do not impact the stormwater, um, engineering, fire, um, public health, none of that.
Okay, I'm inclined to think we should close the public hearing, but obviously, that's just, you know, it's up to everybody. Um, so before we, and from the nods of the head, it sounds like people are in agreement, but before we do that, is there anybody in the public, we're gonna, we're about to close the public hearing, so this would be your last opportunity to speak on the proposed changes. So, like they say at weddings, you know, speak your, what is it, speak your mind of-
Now forever hold your peace.
Thank you. So anybody? Go ahead, sir.
Peter Johnson, 677 Hale Street, again. I'm glad that the boards, both the DRB and the planning board, has expressed their thoughts about how this process has gone. And many of the, I speak for myself, and I'm sure for many of the neighbors, without authorization, to say that we all appreciate how much time everybody has put in on this. Probably two or three meetings that didn't need to happen, but you've been diligent in working at it, and that is much appreciated. Most people have no idea how much time you put in, and it's, we thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, any other questions, comments, or members of the board? Any reason not to close this? Just wanna do that last check. Okay, I'd welcome a motion, Derek?
Uh, move to close the public hearing?
Oh, there we go.
Second.
Ooh, fast. All right, any further discussion on the matter? All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is closed.
We're just going ahead and making the decision.
Okay. Okay. Okay, let's deal with this now. And my suggestion is, um, we take each one, one at a time. Um, and since the first one has been withdrawn, we have to move to accept the withdrawal? No, it's withdrawn, right?
Yeah.
Okay, one has been withdrawn, two has been withdrawn, so the first one that's before us is number three, and that's the use of the Nantucket dormer instead of the regular dormer window on the Everett Street facade. And the question is, do we want to approve that change or not? So I'd welcome a motion on that, please.
It might be, what? Might be cleaner to have discussion on whether to approve and then take a motion to all, all at once.
What do you mean? Do them, do them all at once?
Yes.
I assume that we were gonna do-
No, I'd rather do them one at a time.
Okay.
Because I don't know, I don't know how we do, otherwise you're forcing us into an all or nothing.
Okay.
Well, Madam Chair, when we decided that it was going to, it wasn't a minor modification, it was because you were looking at them holistically.
I think that was one of the reasons.
So should the vote be holistically, then?
I don't, I don't see why it has to be. I think it was, I think, I don't, I don't think it has to be.
It isn't, it isn't required, it can be done.
I'm, I'm just talking, I'm speaking to the intent behind, the, the argument for it being, it not being a minor modification, because we're looking at them all as a whole. That, that's all, I'm just saying.
I think, for me personally, last time we voted, and the issue was, should these be considered a minor modification or not? If there had been one or two of them, looking at them individually, sure, maybe they were minor, but the number of them, at least for me, as well as the substantive nature of them, pushed it into a non-minor or a major modification. But I don't think that simply because we looked at them in terms of the number, the number of modifications, as well as the substantive nature of them, means that we have to treat that as a whole now. Because one of the things, as I, as I think I just mentioned to Emily, what I personally don't like is that if we treat them as a whole, it's, it's an up or down. It's either we approve everything or we deny everything. And to me, it makes more sense, it's more prudent, to deal with these one at a time, but I, you know, will, happy to, to consider other board members' opinions. Derek?
Madam Chair, I would agree with you, there are some of these, um, that, much, much like it was presented with five or six waiver requests or something.
Exactly.
Where we would then be voting individually on waivers. That's the way I'm viewing this, and I can just say that there are some of these that I'm, will support, and there are some of these I will not support. Um, and so an up or down vote on the entire thing would actually push me to not support the entire package, and I'd rather do it individually.
I'll go with that, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us back to number three, the use of the Nantucket dormer instead of the regular dormer window on Everett Street facade.
Madam Chair, you want a motion to move to approve? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to approve the use of the Nantucket dormer instead of the regular dormer window on Everett Street facade?
The motion by Ms. Flannery, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Miller. Any further discussion on the matter? Okay, just a reminder, if you vote yes, you are approving what the developer has done in lieu of the plan. If you deny it, we're basically saying that the developer has to go back and comply with the, um, with the original, or the original- the, with the original, or the approved plan, just so that everybody knows. Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. How many of us are there? One, two, three, seven to one. Okay, the next one is, oh, that's been withdrawn, sorry. I'm sorry, nope, the solid deck, yeah, the solid deck rail with cedar shakes, replacing the wood slat balusters on the north facade decks. Ms. Flannery?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the solid deck rail with cedar shakes, replacing the wood slat balusters on the north facade decks.
There a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Any further discussion on the motion?
Yes, actually, I just, might as well. To me, this was just a decision made by the developer, just in total disregard to what the plan was, with no apparent reason. We can only speculate as to reason. The privacy issue, we had a discussion about privacy with the privacy sides on the side of the deck for the, for the neighbor. So, the issue of privacy, they had more than enough opportunity to present this as a privacy issue for their residents of the purchasers of the condominium. To me, this was disregard for the plan, that was clear. It was no mistake about what they were supposed to do.
Thank you, Derek. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Six to two. The next item, we've turned now to the first of the landscape, landscape. It's landscape number two, if you're following along. It's-
Because landscape one was withdrawn, right?
Yes, thank you. Add the two, two-inch caliper honey locust tree at the southwest corner of the property, modify the low plantings at the corner, and add the stone wall between the tree and the sidewalk.
Yes? Do you want to move?
Sure. I move to approve adding two-inch caliper honey locust tree at the southeast corner, excuse me, southwest corner of property, and modify the low plantings at the corner, add the stone wall between the tree and the sidewalk.
I have a motion by Ms. Flannery, is there a second? By Mr. Miller. Discussion on this one, when it says to add the stone wall between the tree and the sidewalk.
It's simply adding the stone wall, it wasn't previously in the plan.
Okay.
Well, is it existing now or not?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? That one passes unanimously, eight to zero. Okay, the next one is landscape number three, the removal of the bluestone path from the Hale Street entrance to the Everett Street driveway.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to, excuse me, I move to approve the removal of the bluestone path from Hale Street entrance to the Everett Street driveway.
Motion by Ms. Flannery, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, is that Sarah?
That's me.
Nope, Andrea, thank you.
Sorry my voice.
Discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor? I'm sorry? One, two, three, four, five, six, all opposed? Motion passes, six to two. Okay, landscape number four, change the twenty emerald green arborvitae on the eastern perimeter to five Bradford street pear, I'm sorry, five Bradford pear trees, I'm so sorry. Ms. Flannery?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the change, the twenty emerald green arborvitae, five inches tall, on the eastern perimeter, to five Bradford pear trees, paren, higher than ten feet tall at planting, end of paren.
I have a motion, is there a second, please?
A second.
Who's that? Rodney? Thank you, Rodney. You guys are fast. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? One, two, three. Did everybody vote?
Yep, it's, wait.
That's the opposition. Can I see the approval again? Oh, okay, all right, motion passes, five, three. Next is landscape number five, change the bluestone walkway on the northern portion of the site to paved walkway.
Madam Chair, I move to change the bluestone walkway on the northern portion of the site to paved walkway.
I have a motion by Ms. Flannery, is there a second, please?
Second.
I have a second by Andrea.
I'm going to mute the person on the phone, just in case.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, six to two.
Kim, Mr. Flannery.
Next is landscape number six. Shift six maple trees on the northern perimeter of the site, of the site slightly east, modify the stone wall, and add six rose bushes to the northwest corner.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve the shift, to shift six maple trees on northern perimeter of site slightly east, modify stone wall, and add six rose bushes to the northwest corner to facilitate snow storage area.
I have a motion by Ms. Flannery, is there a second? Seconded by Wayne. Discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Wait, 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 discussion?
What, oh, there was discussion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we actually measure that and note how far it is, rather than vague, slightly.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
It's vague, it's just slightly east, I wonder if you should clarify that.
I think the purpose of that would be to hold the developer to that, and whereas they've already been planted, he might, I might suggest instead him sharing the specifics, or I think they're, they're described on the plan. Or as noted on the plan, so the, yeah.
We're looking at you now, Ellen. Yeah, you want to modify that?
I think the proposal is to modify the motion to, instead of saying slightly east, east as noted on the proposed plan.
I think it would be the as-built plan.
The as-built plan, sorry.
Okay. You want to modify that, Ms. Flannery?
I will, I will modify that to read, shift six maple trees on northern perimeter of site as noted on the as-built plans. Modify the stone wall and add six rose bushes to the northwest corner to facilitate snow storage area.
Yes.
Are you comfortable with that?
I am. I have a motion by Ms. Flannery, do I have a second by Mr. Miller? Is there further discussion on the motion?
To me, this was, I'm just explaining a little bit, this was the movement of a wall, this was not shifting of something slight, it was, to me, fairly significant, and we had talked specifically about whether, how snow was going to be removed on the site. The developer had a chance to defend that there was enough space and did, and so, I have an issue with an on-the-fly disregard for discussion that was already had.
Thank you, Derek. Any further discussion on the motion?
I would just say, I hear that, and I think that was a good reason to bring it to a public hearing. I don't think that I'm prepared to make them go back and move the wall. I think you're totally right, and I think that's why we're here tonight.
Further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, six to two. Next change is number seven, change the low-lying plants at the, plantings at the northwest corner from shamrock and lilyrope, whatever, to lily turf. I'll try it.
Move to change the low-lying plantings at the northwest corner from shamrock and lilyrope spicata to lily turf.
Is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Miller. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, seven to one. Last but by no means least, number eight, remove the plantings bordering the sidewalk in front of the garage bays.
Madam Chair, I move to remove the plantings bordering the sidewalk in front of the garage bays.
Is there a second on the motion?
A second.
Ooh, seconded by Mr. Sinclair. Discussion on the motion?
Yes, please. I'm just a little confused, what, does this include the not extending the wall, wherever?
Actually, I was confused too, so.
Yeah, what covers the wall?
How does the motion, how does the removal of the plantings bordering the sidewalk in front of the garage bay tie in with the DRB recommendation to modify by extending the stone wall seven feet along Everett?
So, what's happening right now is, it's, you're choosing not to incorporate the Design Review Board's letter of recommendation, you are taking it into account when considering each piece, but you are, you're not including it in the motion to approve. You are simply taking each proposed change.
No, I understand that, I guess what I'm asking is, what exactly is the DRB's recommendation here?
The DRB's recommendation is to change the landscaping to extend the stone wall. And so, what a motion could be, it could be to approve the removal of the plantings bordering, it could be to modify that, or to approve the plantings with the condition that the stone wall is extended, it could be to simply deny it and to require the stone wall.
The stone wall is just a moot point here.
Okay, so, and then, in that case, it just doesn't need to be added.
It doesn't need to be dealt with. Thank you.
We're not accepting the condition, to do something, therefore, it just doesn't exist.
Right, so that's why the Design Review Board's letter is not being incorporated into the decision. It's being taken, each thing is being taken with the Design Review Board's letter in consideration, but it's not being incorporated.
So, if I could just ask a clarifying question, so, the, when the modification was approved, one of the Design Review Board recommendations was planting along that, along the bordering sidewalk. That's all it was, there wasn't a wall, there was just the plantings.
What was previously approved was just plantings.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
And so, the developer did not put the plantings in, and that was the, they came and said, we'd like this modification, but the Design Review Board said, well, actually, we'd like to have a stone wall, seven feet out.
Correct.
Okay.
So, they made a recommendation based on another recommendation that we didn't accept, so therefore, the second recommendation is a moot point.
So, we're just, we're just voting, our move is to, to, you know, either accept or deny the removal of the plantings bordering the sidewalk.
Forgive me, Ms. Flannery, did you make a motion on this?
I did, Madam Chair.
Mr. Sinclair.
Oh, thank you. Guys are all over this. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, six to two. I think that wraps it up.
Can I just make a couple words to the contractor, please? I just want to say, thank you for coming back and making those changes. I know this has been real tough, you know. We've heard a lot about how we spent a lot of time, unnecessary time, and I just want to give a couple pointers, just in case you're going to go through something like this again, that way, it's not, oh, I just didn't know. But also, I just want to say, I completely recognize that on the field, in the field, things change every single day. You've got the architect's plans, first of all, we've got a schematic plan over here, which has nothing to do with the building plans. You get out there, you're building something, it doesn't fit, it doesn't work, there's materials, lead time, all that kind of stuff, you know. You seem to come back here, you seem to be humble, you haven't been defensive, which speaks a lot. So, I would just recommend, honestly, if you're going to go through a Design Review Board, and your architect's there, you bring your architect to every board meeting. Derek has talked a lot about intent, no offense, but your attorney can't speak to that, your architect can. He was there, he should have been there. That way, when you come back, you have the people that are responsible able to speak to the board members about that. They should know the process. I know that when it comes to building a building, unlike a large-scale building, you know, the architect may, you know, you're worried about your costs, right? And they're not at every single meeting with you. But when it comes to these boards, you want to make sure you have the right team members there. You've got your attorney here, you should have your architect here, and they should know the process. If you would have done that, you may have been able to not have to go through all this. So, just, just do better, you know, and learn from this moment, all right?
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Ms. Flannery?
Just one comment. Mr. Alexander, if you'd be so kind to advise your client that it's always worth making a phone call instead of making a decision, there's somebody always available in the Planning Department that can guide him. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I think we got that message. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I realize this was a significant amount of effort for not a huge project, but we do appreciate the time and the input.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, we are going to have to go into executive session. We will move into executive session in a minute. We will be returning to this meeting afterwards. So, I would like to ask for a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Subpart 3, so that this board can discuss pending litigation in the matter of 133 Brimble LLC versus members of the Planning Board at all, Land Court Civil Action, Number 21MISC, Miscellaneous 000274. Purpose of the executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to this litigation. As chairperson, I declare that an executive session is necessary, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the Planning Board's litigation position. We will reconvene in open session after the executive session concludes. So, I would welcome a motion to enter into executive session.
So, moved, Madam Chair?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Flannery. I need to take a roll call vote.
Moved by Ms. Flannery.
Did I say something? Yes.
You said seconded by Ms. Flannery.
I'm sorry, Ellen.
No worries, Ellen. Mr. Beckwith, please, a second.
Okay, so, this needs to be a roll call vote. Sarah Bartley?
This is a vote to enter executive session.
Yes.
Yes.
Derek Beckwith?
Yes.
Ellen Flannery?
Yes.
Wayne Miller?
Yes.
Rodney Sinclair?
Yes.
Brendan Sweeney?
Yes.
Andrea Toulouse?
Yes.
Ellen Hutchinson, yes. Okay, so, we are going to go into Conference Room A?
That is correct. And so, I'm going to log out through Cert 1 computer.
Let's see, I'll ask Ms. Williams to come with us.
And so, there is a separate link.
Everything in here will be fine here, Sam?
Yep, so, we are now on recess.
Oh. This is pretty informative. This is pretty important.
I can't see what's going on.
Put my strike pen?
You need a tennis racket.
We are, Madam Chair.
Okay, could I have a motion, please, to resume our meeting?
So moved?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We're back to our meeting. Our next agenda item is number three. It is a modification of site plan number 168-18. The location is 232 Rantoul Street, and the applicant is NOMSG Properties LLC.
And we have Mike Smith and Ben Gary here virtually.
All right.
Okay.
Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Hello? Mike, Ben, are you there?
Okay.
Can you, can you hear me? Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Want to feed that?
Um, okay, so yeah, we came to the last meeting to request to modify the special permit issued on July 30th, 2018, under Special Permit Application 168-18. And in that meeting, I think you guys decided or voted to defer to traffic and parking. I need to have them weigh in. So we went to the traffic and parking meeting, and they were okay with the plan. They had some conditions. And so we are now back here in front of you guys to, again, request to modify that special permit.
Right, so the only thing that has changed since this was heard previously is the Parking and Traffic Commission has reviewed the proposal, and they have submitted a letter stating they voted to accept the modified plan and recommend that the Planning Board approve the modification request and add the requested relief with three conditions. That, that letter is part of your packet. So what the board needs to do tonight is vote whether to determine this is a major or minor modification, and then if it's determined to be minor, the board can vote on it tonight.
This is a special permit, so there needs to be findings.
Yes.
Okay.
Do they have any?
So there are, findings are described in, should be the staff report.
Top of the second page of the staff report.
Right. How do we make findings? There's been no discussion about those, about that criteria.
I believe that is what this evening is for, is whether you want to move it to, whether you want to discuss it tonight, if it's considered minor, or whether you want to move it to public hearing.
Oh. Are you saying that, that if it's a minor modification, we don't have to make those specific findings?
No, there, there would still, the findings would still need to be made. It's just the decision to make those findings would come after it's determined to be major or minor.
I guess, my concern is always this. This is, it's a modification to a special permit, and there are specific findings that are required to be made. And they should be based upon credible, what's called credible and substantial evidence. And the applicant hasn't mentioned those criteria at all. And, and the applicant ought to be mentioning those criteria, because it's the applicant's responsibility to provide us with the evidence that those criteria have or have not been met. So, I mean, unless there's another way around it, I mean, if the applicant wishes to address those criteria now, he's more than welcome.
The criteria being the, the traffic and parking finding, is that what you're referring to?
So, Mike, the criteria are listed on the staff report. I believe I sent it to you as well, on page two, when I sent you the agenda. And they're the criteria for a special permit, or they're, they're findings for a special permit. So they're on page two of that staff report, and they are, A, that the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use, and that the character of adjoining uses will not be adversely affected; B, that no factual evidence is found that property values in the district will be adversely affected by such use; C, that no undue traffic or no nuisance or unreasonable hazard will result; D, that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and maintenance of the proposed use; E, that there are no valid objections from abutting property owners based on demonstrable fact; and F, that adequate and appropriate city services are or will be available for the proposed use.
Okay, yep, I'm, I'm looking at those, and I'd be happy to run through those. So for, for, A, that the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use. So essentially, what we're proposing to do is we have three parking spots on our property. Those were approved to be adequate in the 2018 meeting that I referenced. What we are proposing to do is to eliminate those three parking sp, or not eliminate them, really move those three parking spots from onsite to in the road for street parking. So we're not reducing parking spots, we're, we're really just moving them. We have three curb cuts in, in front of our building. We'd be surrendering two of them permanently, and then one of them during business hours that we would, like we discussed with the traffic and parking. We would use some temporary signage on, during times when we would be surrendering the, the one curb cut during the business hours. In order to surrender the other two permanently, we would have to remove the driveway ramps, install permanent curb, and replace the sidewalk where the driveway ramps are. So in terms of an appropriate location for the proposed use, it's, it's really just turning street parking into street, it's, it's, it's changing a driveway into street parking, which is totally appropriate for, for that use. B, the factual evidence is found that property values in the district will be adversely affected. I, I don't, I don't see how property values would be adversely affected by this in any way, because again, we're really just changing the driveway to a parking spot, which would provide more street parking for not only our business, but, but others around us. So if anything, it would almost help surrounding properties. No undue traffic or nuisance. Again, it's, it's moving three parking spots from on our property into the street where these would have been driveways. I actually feel like this will improve. If you don't have a car going in and out of the driveway, it'll, it'll just be a parallel parking spot. That seems like it would actually help the traffic situation. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and maintenance of the proposed use. So I mean, essentially what we're proposing is, is to turn it into permanent curb and sidewalk. There is no maintenance associated with curb and sidewalk. That's, it becomes city property at that point. And, I mean, we'll, we'll be following all city rules, regulations, coordinating with the city to install the curb and sidewalk. So as far as proper operation and maintenance, I don't see why that would be an issue. No valid objections from abutting property owners. I have, we have not heard anything from any abutting property owners for, in terms of objections. And the last one, that adequate and appropriate city services are, or will be available for the proposed use. I, yeah, I mean, I, I get, this, this would just be changing driveways to parking spots, so I don't see why that would affect city services, really, in any way. So those are, I believe, all of the findings? Is there anything else I can answer on that? This is, this is Ben Garrett from Old Planners. I just wanted to add real quick, too, that we've had this footprint of outdoor seating for over a year now, and had a kind of, kind of a dry run to see how everything would work out. And so far, from, from everything I understand, it's, it's successful. So just so you guys know, we're just continuing kind of what's already there, making it permanent. And so far, so good. So I just wanted to add that point.
Derek, you had a question?
Yeah, actually, that last comment dovetails with what, what I was waiting to hear, and that is discussion about why the parking changes. Not just that the parking changes aren't a big deal, or they're minor, or things like that. It's, you're requesting this because you need it in order to construct a permanent outdoor eating area. I'd like to know more about that. I know you said you've done it for a year. How many people are served? When is it open? Give us some background on what it is you're actually wanting to do with this special permit that you need a reconfiguration of the parking for.
Sure. With COVID now here, I think outdoor seating is important for people who, you know, might be immunocompromised, not comfortable. We have nine tables out there that each one seats six people. But I think for us, it's just us trying to, you know, be relevant and compete in the, what you'd say is the new normal. I think outdoor seating is a real asset for a business with, I mean, look, every day, things are changing with new variants, et cetera. I just think having outdoor seating is a important thing in the world we live in now. So they asked about hours of operation. We operate Tuesday through Sunday. Tuesday through Thursday, we're four to 10. Friday, four to 11. Saturday, 12 to 11. And Sunday, eight to 12. So basically, what we want to change a little bit is to have some, you know, make the space more permanent and put some money into it. Right now, it's pretty bare bones. If we were to make it permanent, we'd like to have new tables, you know, a roof covering in weather, just some protection from the elements, stuff like that.
Do you have any renderings, pictures, description, you know, is it enclosed? Is it permanent, semi-permanent? Do you have anything to show us?
So I submitted a plan for the July meeting. I, I wasn't, I, I wasn't sure, I mean, was I supposed to resubmit that for this meeting?
No, one moment, let me pull it up.
Okay. My apologies.
I remember a schematic.
You guys would have that, Andy. So yes, we do have, we are proposing some permanent stuff. We're, we're proposing a fence along the side of the property to provide some more privacy between our property and the abutting property. We're proposing an overhead canopy, a permanent steel frame structure with like a metal standing seam roof that will cover about two-thirds of the, you know, what we're calling patio space. And then about one-third of it will be still open with no cover. And then we're proposing like a concrete paper stone patio. And some, some planters along the front as well.
So walls and a roof, basically?
Essentially, yes.
And nine tables that seat six, so 54 people?
So that is the, that's our current setup. Because of COVID, things are a little loose. But for this, we're proposing a capacity of 37 people in this outdoor space. Our building and bathrooms are set up for a capacity of 136. We have an indoor capacity of 99, which will allow us an additional 37 for this outdoor space. So it would likely be more, we're, we're going to be utilizing, what we're proposing, 450 square feet of this patio, so it'd be likely more like six tables of six people. I'd just like to add, watching it there, the place never fills up perfectly with six people sitting at nine tables, you know, ever. I think at most, we've seen like, you know, a lot of two to three people take those tables, and then they're, you know, considered full. So, I mean, I've never seen more than, at one time, 40 people out there, just to add to that. Yeah. Essentially, on our property, we have a capacity of 136 people. So if, if the inside is totally at capacity at 99, then we could fit another 37 outside. That's including staff.
And so, Madam Chair?
Please.
So you've been doing this for the last year, and you haven't had any complaints from, you know, your butters? Any problems, you know, with crowd control or anything like that? I'm trying to get you some talking points on point A here, folks.
I, I can, I can, yes. I can speak to that. We have a building across the street from us. I don't know the exact use of it. I think, I, I don't know what the use of it is. But anytime we got complaints, it was actually, it was recent that, you know, we were playing music or something, but it, that was actually happening inside. Again, relating back to COVID, we have garage windows that we like to leave open for air circulation. And sometimes, you know, when we have live music on the weekends, that doesn't, the, there's been, one, one neighbor in particular, or one neighbor only, that's had issues with the music, but that did not relate directly to our outdoor seating. That was actually happening inside. So it's kind of this push and pull of, do we leave the garage windows open for air circulation, or try to make our neighbors happy by shutting them? But as it regards to the outdoor seating, is your question, we, we haven't had issues with crowd control. One thing about the tavern is we either close at 10 or 11 at night, and, you know, we usually see that things start to wind down around nine or 10 versus ramp up, and we're not open till midnight or 1:00 AM or whatever the rules may be. So we usually kind of, things have moved on fully by 11:00 PM, so no issues there.
Wayne?
And Ben, I don't know if I'm accurate in saying this, but I, I feel like the, the bulk of our customers are spending their time outside, mostly in like daylight or dusk. I mean, by, by the late hours, there's, there's not many people, if any, sitting outside any, any longer. Yeah, I'd agree with that. I mean, once in a while, maybe you still have four tables out there, five tables. out there, five tables. But it's usually just, you know, people having conversation. It's never got, you know, I've never been aware of any issues, never heard anything from the city. Again, we've just had a couple of calls about music in the past few months, and we shut the garage windows even though we didn't want to. But again, that doesn't relate to the outdoor seating.
Is there a question, Wayne?
Yes, please. I was just going to ask about, where do your employees park?
Can you say it into the mic?
Sorry. Where do your, I'm asking about employee parking.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that one.
How about now?
Yep.
I was, I'm asking about employee parking?
Yes. So during the day, so we have two brewers that are there from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Monday to Friday. Those don't conflict with our operating hours as a taproom. And then for our servers, taproom manager, they usually park on the street and pack it like anyone else would. Or if they are, if they, you know, currently, if they park in front of our building, if those spots, I believe, are ours, and no one's ever been ticketed. But they do what anybody else would and park on the street side and pack.
I brought this up in the, in the traffic and parking meeting as well, but in the, in the two years that we've been open, those three parking spots are rarely, if ever, parked in. I don't know if, if people just find it to be too good to be true, or what it is. But, but it's just, it's very rare, even when we're very busy, that there are any cars in there, maybe one. But, but that's, that's really been it. So.
Yeah, I think, you know, people look at it as a driveway and treat it as a driveway. And, you know, even though we have some signs there, some signage, I think people look at it as a driveway and don't really use it for parking. So actually moving those spots is actually more of a natural space for them to be in, if anything.
So I guess my question is, do you have an obligation to provide offsite, to arrange for offsite parking for employees?
No. No, and that was, that was the purpose of our special, our original special permit in 2018, that based on the use of our building, we needed to have so many parking spaces. That original permit, I gotta pull up, but I, I believe it was, it was six point something, it was six point something spaces. I think it was 6.8 spaces for the taproom, and then it was like 6.2 spaces for the brewery. And so it totaled 13 spaces. We came to you guys to ask for a special permit for three, to allow us to operate with three spaces. That's what was approved. And then the one other thing that I do want to point out is, you know, technically, by using, you know, those regulations, we technically need 13 spaces. But the brewery and the taproom are never open at the same time. The brewery is open during normal working hours, the taproom, you know, open during, you know, later hours. So it's really, I, from my perspective, should be construed as, there should really be six parking spaces total. And so what we're proposing is, is the four. And that includes, that includes everyone. That includes customers, staff, everything.
Ben, Chair, could I ask a question?
Yeah, I'm just looking for clarification on something.
Here it is. Here's the decision.
Okay. Okay, so that was a condition that was imposed upon the applicant by this board, correct?
Yes.
And there is a condition that reads, "The project proponent will arrange for offsite parking for employees while the taproom is open to the public. Offsite parking accommodation for employees may include utilizing the MBTA garage or the employee parking pass through the city's downtown parking program once available." That's what I was referring to. And you seem to think you do not have any condition, as I just described. So I'm not clear if you do or you don't, or if you know that you do.
That was, that was one of our conditions in 2018?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I will have to re-review that.
Yep.
So that was part of the Parking and Traffic Commission letter that was incorporated into the decision.
And if I don't mind, what does that pertain to as far as what we're talking about? I'm not trying to interrupt.
He was saying, because he was saying the employees could use the spaces.
Yeah.
That's what he's saying.
That's how I understand it, yeah. And I don't know what constitutes offsite parking. Is it offsite parking if you're in front of the establishment? Is that offsite parking? And what does it mean that the project proponent, sorry?
Oops, sorry.
And what does it mean exactly that the project proponent will arrange for? And it then goes on to specify that that may include MBTA garage, I assume that's paid passes, or the employee parking pass through the city's program. I don't know if any of that was complied with, and I think it's relevant.
So what you're saying is, you don't, you don't want those spots, those spots to be remained open to customers versus employees, is what we're getting at?
Yeah. So my understanding of that condition back in 2018 was that we couldn't have employees use the three onsite spots, which, which is what we actually did. Our two brewers who parked there during the day when the taproom wasn't open, they parked there because no one else was coming to the place. The place was closed at that point. So they were the only two people who could actually use those spots. But at night, we never let employees park in those spots. We left them open for customers. But like I said, customers almost never park there. That's, that's what I thought that condition was. And if, if I'm mistaken, then perhaps we didn't follow it correctly. But that's what I thought it was. And if that's, if I'm interpreting that correctly, that is what we have been doing for the last two years.
Okay, well.
With that, I would say, these spots that we're moving, proposing to move them to, we could maintain that condition until our employees, they can't park in those spots.
Okay. And Mike, just to add, just because, you know, when I'm there operating, et cetera, Mike is right, that those, those spaces are used by our brewers during the day. But yes, bartenders and taproom managers do not use that, those three spots. So, sorry. Hey, that was good. Now that was clarified.
Yeah, you're before us requesting a special permit, which we may condition. And we did, in fact, grant a special permission previously with conditions which apparently have not been complied with. Is that, if that's inaccurate, please tell me.
Yeah, yeah. So I think from what our understanding was, is that they have been complied with, and then also, you know, if we forward this with the curb cuts outside, that those become parking spots, we can now just shift that, let employees know that they are not.
Okay. I guess I would just like to hear how you intend going forward to comply with the previous condition.
Does the employees don't park in those spots? I guess that's, that's, that's my question. From, from our interpretation of that condition, it was that we, that the planning board back in 2018 did not want our employees taking up those valuable three spots, whereas, you know, we are, we were technically supposed to have 12 spots by the regulations. We were only providing three spots. And I, it was my understanding, the planning board did not want us to use those valuable spots for our employees to park. And we did comply with that. Our employees did not park in those three spots. So in terms of continuing to maintain that condition, the spots that we're proposing to move these spots to, which are surrendering our driveways to give the city more street parking, we would tell our employees they can park in those spots either.
Okay, I feel, sorry, I feel as though I'm being asked to interpret this condition, which I defer. It's not my job.
I'll interpret it. There you go. Because I think it places an affirmative obligation on, on your part.
Well, can we, can we, if I, if I may, Parking and Traffic Commission made these conditions. They also reviewed the current proposal and have voted to authorize or approve the current proposal. Without needing to interpret what they said, I would assume, and I mean, from, I mean, that they have thought about this as well in their decision to approve this current proposal. I mean, that's their, their purview, that's their platform. I would assume that they're, that they've had this conversation or taken this into consideration. That way, we didn't have to necessarily analyze it for them. Would that, is that, is that, no?
Um.
So Parking and Traffic Commission did not think of this?
I would say this, that I think it is, it is always within our purview to make sure that the conditions that are included in our decisions are being met.
So let's not interpret. Why don't we just ask them then, instead of interpreting it for them? Maybe that's a conversation between. Ask who? Parking and Traffic and the Commission. They didn't write that, well, they didn't approve that condition we did.
You know, in the.
Their letter, they reckon, this is.
I, I, I want to.
Sorry.
No, 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 no. I want to move this along, but I think you're right. I, I think it's well within our purview to interpret.
Yeah.
Because if we're approving conditions, we obviously are giving meaning and definition to them. And frankly, to me, the language is, is pretty unequivocal. The project proponent will arrange, will arrange for offsite parking for employees while the taproom is open to the public. Offsite parking accommodation for employees may include utilizing the MBTA garage or the employee parking pass through the city's downtown parking program once available. I think that that creates an affirmative obligation on the part of the ownership to make arrangements for parking.
So I think, I think they have done what they have said they were going to do, just based on the city's review and analysis. They have determined not to use those specific parking spaces for employee parking. And it's been something that the city has consistently been aware of, as they've done their downtown parking review. And if the city did not, was not of the opinion that they were complying, then it's the planning department's job, it's the engineering department's job to say, look, this is not, you're not complying with the condition. And they've discussed how employee, they clearly know how employees have been parking. They've been reviewing it with them. So it's, and again, as Mr. Sinclair pointed out, it is something that the Parking and Traffic Commission has reviewed. So not to step on the board's toes, but this is what's just been going on at the staff level and at Parking and Traffic Commission level.
Derek?
If I don't mind, I ask the board, have any issues arisen from this in the, like, two and a half years we've been operational? Has anything come about that is a problem with what we're trying to propose tonight?
Well, I think that parking as a whole in the downtown Rantoul Street or Park Street area is problematic. Derek, did you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's telling that the condition that was approved before doesn't say, including on-street parking. It is pretty specific about sending cars and employees in other directions away from the site and adjacent to the site. For, so to me, there's no question about that. And I also think that if we're looking at having 30 some odd outdoor seating, seats on a permanent basis, the idea of having employees park in those three public parking places is bad public policy and bad, would be a poor condition. And there should be an employee parking program.
And that certainly, if you determine that this is a minor modification, and that we're going to act on this this evening, then something like that could be a condition, if you so desire, of approval. I'm sorry?
Yeah, I guess essentially, this has kind of turned into a question. So that condition was imposed about the offsite parking requirement originally in 2018, when the special permit was granted. That condition itself would not change if we were to ultimately view this a minor modification and approve such modifications here. And just so I understand, under the proposal in front of us, there's four new parking spaces, three in addition to the one that are street parking, but technically considered to be onsite. And so to adhere to the stipulation in the originally approved plan in 2018, employees would not be parking in any of those four spots.
Right.
Correct. Okay.
Hey, Woodin?
Thank you.
The project proponent will arrange for offsite parking for employees while the taproom is open to the public.
Wayne, can you speak into the microphone?
Sorry. Again, I read that the project proponent will arrange for the offsite parking for employees while the taproom is open to the public. I'm not sure that's been complied with, and it is concerning to me that the project proponent was apparently interpreting that quite differently than we would have, I would have expected. So that's of concern.
Just to, just to say, I respectfully disagree. I think we haven't complied with it. And I think now that the parking spot, we'd be happy to continue to comply with it.
Well, you can also, Wayne, if you so desire, beef up that, beef up that condition in a decision. You can make it more specific. So Rodney, did you have a comment, a question?
Yeah, I was just, again, just going to stress that we, we respect and trust our city agencies, because they have the ability to focus in and hone in on particular issues, design, parking, things of that nature. I know we don't have to vote the way that they recommend. But I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing is, board members are concerned that they're not adhering to the conditions that were imposed by the Parking Commission, even though the Parking Commission reviewed their proposal and would have, and I know this is a big assumption, but it's a pretty logical assumption, the Parking Commission would have looked at whether or not they're adhering to those conditions. In their, it's pretty logical that they would have taken this into consideration, given that there were conditions imposed by them, imposed. And so, I don't, I'm just, again, now, I'm, I don't understand. I apologize. I'm new to the board to a large degree, you know, I haven't been here for a long time. So how do we begin to make judgments that counter the recommendations of agency?
We're not making any recommendations that counter, that counter anything that anybody, let me strike that. We are not, oh my gosh, it's, it's really getting late. We're not, we're not seeking to go against anything that any other department or agency or board has, has voted upon. To the contrary, I think what we're looking for is, is stricter compliance. And, and I would say, also say one thing to you. In addition, your comments talked about the conditions that are imposed upon the applicant by these other commissions and reviews. They're not, okay? They're recommendations to the planning board. So these are decisions of the planning board that recognize the contributions of design review board, of parking and traffic condition. I go back to my original statement. I think the language is pretty unequivocal. I also think we're starting to get a little bit into, into weeds here. I'm. I also think we're starting to get a little bit into weeds here. I'm not saying it's not important. I'm saying that we can, you can, Wayne, if you want, you can adjust it if, via motion, if we deem this to be minor and we move, we seek to move on this this evening. I want to make sure that everybody has an, has had the opportunity to look at the recommendation from the Parking and Traffic Commission, because I think it's a little bit different than, than what they were talking about before. And they do, Rich Benevento does a great job in laying this out. He talks about, in the middle of the page two of his letter, he says, "In view of the foregoing, the commission voted six-zero to accept the modified plan and recommended that the planning board approve the modification request and were being asked to provide additional relief for two parking spaces for the increase in the taproom size." So with this shift in use, this additional outdoor dining, the square footage requirements have changed and the parking has changed. So again, what we're being asked to vote on is changes as well. And I just want to make sure that everybody's at an opportunity to do that. Are there any other questions or comments for the applicants?
Brendan?
This, just, I want to make sure I can ask this question. It's not so much for the applicant, probably more so for you, Emily, on this piece. The recommendation coming from the Parking and Traffic Commission with the two additional spaces, that would mean that we would be, if we accepted this recommendation, deviating from the plan submitted by the applicant, to then need a total of six street parking spaces? Am I interpreting that correctly?
That is how I, how I read it. And Mike, perhaps you can correct me if I'm wrong. That's due to the additional space for outdoor dining that's permanent?
Well, I mean, as permanent as outdoor space can be, I mean, it's seasonal. So yes, we're adding space outside, which is technically adding space to the taproom size, which would add the applicable parking spots, which is one every 250 square feet. So you're talking just under, adding just under two spots. And I really want to emphasize completely that currently, there is no on-street parking in front of our building. Those are all curb cuts. So we are, we are, I just want to make this clear, we are adding street parking. We're not just shifting it. There is no street parking in front of our building because of three curb cuts right now. So those are all going to become street parking. And then just my last point, I just, I feel like, I feel like I'm, you guys are trying to catch us in a lie or something. I mean, we, I don't know how else to prove to you guys, but we have arranged with all of our staff, and we have told all of them, they cannot park in those three spots. That was our interpretation, based on the meeting we held in 2018. I don't know how else to explain it, but I know it says off-site parking. I mean, I'm reading the condition now, says off-site parking, and it says may include the MBTA garage or employee parking pass. It doesn't say it has to include that. So I just, I feel like we're being accused of, like, non-compliance. From our perspective, we've been fully compliant with that condition for the last two years. And I just don't know how else to prove it to you guys.
And then I'd also like to add, too, if we do move forward, we're happy to make that compliance tighter, stricter, whatever. I don't really know what that is, but if the board could give us clear parameters, so if we ever came to this meeting again, we wouldn't have to interpret. It'd be pretty cut and dry. But, you know, if we do move forward with this, we're happy to comply further or add some parameters that aren't there. Totally happy to do that. But just from where Mike and I are sitting right now, it does feel kind of like, we don't, we don't know what we did wrong.
Okay, I think our planning director, Darlene Nguyen, has joined us, and either as a question, I suspected a comment. So we'll ask Darlene to weigh in. Good evening, Darlene.
Hello, I'm sorry. I'm walking along and then had difficulty getting in, but I wanted to address a couple of things. Only difficulty for my internet service, I should add. Here. I just wanted to address a couple of things. One is regarding the comment in the Parking and Traffic letter about the additional parking spaces. So the way the zoning ordinance is written for breweries, definition of the taproom does include outdoor seating. So that is why we said that you do have to calculate the extra space or the additional space for outdoor services in the definition and the calculation of taproom. Is that question? And then in regards to the commission, obviously, I wasn't on the Parking and Traffic Commission at that time that that recommendation was made, but I do know that, you know, there is an op, we have not had any complaints about from openers to my knowledge, but there is an option for, at the time when that condition was made, there was not an employee parking program in place yet. The business or employee parking program is now in place. So there is an option that they could participate in that, that is for on-street parking, but in limited areas, so on the side streets and not on Rantoul or Gabbett Street, which confirms, which is consistent with, I think, the, what I believe is the intent of the condition, which is that the employees are not parking in front of the business. And I think they have held to that, but that is generally the nature of that condition. I think I agree with the applicant, and I think the board also understands that as well.
Thank you, Darlene. Andrea, did you wish to offer?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a brief comment, but you had mentioned that you thought the board was trying to catch you in a lie. I resent that, quite frankly, because when the question was asked to you whether you had to provide alternative parking, you seemed to be unaware that that was a condition. So I think the board could be forgiven for probing that a bit. I don't think anyone's trying to catch you in anything. I think we're trying to understand so that we can have enough backup to make a decision, frankly, because these things do get challenged. And we need to be, we need to be thinking about that if no one else is. So that's really all I wanted to say.
Yeah, and I understand, I fully respect that. I don't mean to accuse you of interrogating. I'm on a board myself. I fully understand how these operate. It's just, that comment popped me off card to provide parking, because I just, I just had to refresh myself by looking at that condition. The way I understood that condition, the intent of the condition, was really just to ensure that our employees, like Darlene just explained, do not park in those spots. It wasn't that the business itself was going to be, you know, finding parking for the employee. And that's why, you know, the interpretation, it becomes a little tricky. It says arrange for off-site parking, so if we discuss with our employees to park somewhere else, is that an arrangement? It just becomes, it becomes difficult. So that's why, you know, and Ben and myself tried to explain ourselves, and there was repeated mention of non-compliance. So that's why I mentioned, or I brought up, caught a lie. I just, I felt like I couldn't get out of that one. So I wasn't really sure how else to prove it, but we've, by all means, been trying to comply with that condition the way we understood it. If we didn't understand it, then shame on us. So, my apologies.
Okay, is there anything else?
I guess, really, this discussion comes to, is this, again, is this a minor modification?
Right. So that's the first thing for your consideration tonight, my board members. Do you consider this to be a minor modification?
You're, the aspect of this proposal is that eventually there will be a more robust outdoor seating area. But that's not really part of this discussion right now. Right?
Right.
What the special permit is necessary for is for the modification of, or the modification is for a special permit for parking related?
For parking. So the fact that, what the intent of the proponent is in the future as far as their outdoor dining, it really isn't relevant to this question at the moment, correct?
Correct. It's just whether the movement of those parking spaces is considered a minor modification.
Derek?
But we're not going to have another presentation for anything to do with the actual construction of the outdoor seating and serving and things like that. This is our, this modification is part of it.
This is just the removal, the removal of the parking spaces.
But, but your question is, will there be a further discussion around?
I'm not anticipating that there would be.
No.
No. So this is really wrapped together. I know this is only about the parking relief. However, we're not going to see, you know, schematics in the plan and all that sort of stuff. This is, by giving the special permit, they'll be able to move ahead with those plans. Correct?
The special permit is for relief?
The special permit is very specifically for parking relief. So what's under consideration for the board tonight is not the construction of an outdoor seating space. It is simply the movement of those off-street parking spaces to on-street, and it's the creation of additional parking spaces that are on-street in front of the lot.
But the recalculation of the spaces has to do with the creation of outdoor dining?
It does, but I think you're, you're going a step beyond what's necessary. It really is about the removal of those on-site parking spaces, returning them to the street, giving them the relief from parking that they and others in that area have requested from us. And I think that's it. That's it. With an understanding, of course, as to why they're doing it. And it's because of the, of the provision of outside dining and beer drinking.
But, but we...
So if we were to say that this was minor, and then we were to move ahead with the actual granting of the permits and the different findings we'd have, then there shouldn't be consideration of the outdoor dining as being appropriate for the area, et cetera, et cetera? I guess I'm, I'm trying to wrap it all in together.
Oh, I think you're focusing on what the proposed, what should the proposed use be, right? That's the first criteria? Is the proposed use the expansion of the...
The site specific for the appropriate, is this, that the specific site is appropriate location for the proposed use? And the proposed use, I'm seeing, is the trigger is outdoor dining.
No, I think it's, go ahead.
Sorry. So yeah, outdoor dining is not in the purview of the planning board. It's the building department, it's administrative. And so what is, this special permit is specifically geared toward parking. And that was what had to be considered three years ago. And I don't remember if it was in the staff report or not, but three years ago, this was considered because it's literally right outside the parking overlay district. If they were a few feet to the south, they would not need this relief.
Okay.
Yes. Much as one or more of us might want to weigh in on the proposed use, it's not, we don't have that option.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, Sarah.
Just to be sure that I'm clear, our finding on A, that the specific site is the appropriate location for the proposed use, it's that the street's an appropriate place to park cars, not that the driveway's an appropriate place to put a restaurant.
Correct.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Well said.
All right. Anything else? Who wants to try a motion, if there is one to be tried? This is, first one's easy.
No.
Madam Chair? On Flannery stepping up big time tonight.
I will, my first motion is to deem the modification to the special permit number 168-18 at 232 Rantoul Street with the applicant being N-O-N zero MSG Properties LLC as minor.
I have a motion by Ms. Flannery. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Sweeney.
Rodney's seconded.
Discussion?
Beach and action.
Yes. Go ahead, Wayne.
Just want to remind us all that this means that there will not be a public hearing. If we vote that it's not...
Speak it into the mic.
If it's not, if we vote that it is not a minor modification, then there would be a public hearing.
That is correct.
Voting that it is a minor modification obviates the need for a public hearing.
That is correct.
Don't threaten me with a good time.
That's what I said, yeah.
I said, "Don't threaten me with a good time."
That's why I moved as a minor modification. Right, okay. Brendan?
I do think it's worth, you know, considering what we discussed here about how essentially we're just voting on the movement of parking spaces from three in front of the building, or three, you know, to the right of the building essentially, to right on-street. And on the piece about the compliance with the off-site parking, that that won't change. That requirement's going to stay. And, you know, whether the owner shifts the practices in place or not, you know, as they mentioned, they believe they're in compliance, and there's no reason for us to question that otherwise. So I think that's worth keeping in mind when voting whether or not this is minor, and just really kind of looking at face value, what are we voting on here? Which I personally believe that this is a minor modification.
Any further discussion before we offer this for vote? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously, eight-zero. Okay, given that we have just voted that this is a minor modification, the next step is to make a determination as to whether or not to approve it. And it can be approved as they have requested. It can be approved with conditions. It can be approved with the recommendation of the Parking and Traffic Commission or combination thereof.
I just note that any motion should make the findings that are described.
And we might also modify the existing condition, should we choose to do so.
Should we choose to do so?
Mr. Miller, you make the call. You're up.
I would accept, I actually would need a few minutes to know how to write.
We all would be.
All right. Does somebody want to offer me a motion on this?
Madam Chair, I am reluctant in the sense that I am not clear on, number one, with the findings relative to A, the specific site. I was not clear on what the applicant was saying.
Well, I actually thought...
That was my...
I thought he was, he was fairly clear with respect to A.
Oh, okay.
That the site is an appropriate location for the shifting of the parking spaces. He explained why it's important.
Okay.
And that the character of the adjoining uses of abutting properties will not be affected. So I didn't have an issue with that.
Okay. I wasn't clear myself.
Then that's fine, and I respect that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Madam Chair.
Somebody has to do it, gang.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve special permit application.
No.
No?
So you would, you would vote to make the findings that A, B, C, and D?
Oh, Lord.
And then therefore, and therefore approve. It's a long...
Madam Chair, you want me to continue?
Do it, Ellen.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
It's probably down to the deep end over here.
I will move, Madam Chair, that the board has made the verbal determination on the following findings relative to the modification to special permit number 168-18 at 232 Rantoul Street, that the specific site is an appropriate location for the proposed use, and that the character of the adjoining uses will not be adversely affected. And Mr. Smith indicated that changing the driveway into street parking would be a positive aspect for his business, and it is appropriate in the sense of the change. B, that no factual evidence is found that property values in the district will be adversely affected by such use. And he indicated he has heard none, or doesn't believe there are any. C, that no undue traffic and no nuisance or unreasonable hazard will result. And he indicated...
I think it might just be cleaner to just make the findings, and just based on the discussion. Just, you don't have to, but just as a suggestion. discussion, just, you don't have to, but just as a suggestion.
Okay. The note I had relative to that was parallel parking.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I just put notes that beside my, what was spoken to.
Okay.
D, that he, that adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation and maintenance of the proposed use, that there would be permanent curbs and sidewalks with very little need for the city to take care of that property. E, that there are no valid objections from abutting property owners based on demonstrable fact, and what Mr. Smith indicated, that nobody has been complaining other than for music. And F, that adequate and appropriate city services are or will be available for the proposed use, and that city services really won't be necessary.
Okay, and moving on from that?
That I move to approve the modification to the site plan, excuse me, to the special permit number 168-18 at 232 Rantoul Street with the applicant N-O-M-G Properties LLC.
Would you like to incorporate the-
Yes, I will add that, thank you, Ms. Hutchings. And with my motion, I would like to add the conditions stated in the parking and traffic letter dated-
August sixteenth.
August sixteenth. In particular, subject to compliance to the conditions recommended by the Parking and Traffic Commission as described in their letter dated August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
August sixteenth.
Oh, excuse me, August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference.
And, and Ms. Flannery, that your motion is granting relief from the ten spaces that are, that are required?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
And I believe, and then also, any other conditions as discussed by the board during our meeting tonight that should be incorporated to the-
I think we need that to be, if that's a route we want to go, those conditions would need to be more specific.
Okay, do you want me to just indicate the-
So that-
Subject to-
I think it would be any, subject to any relevant conditions previously, in the previous approved.
Okay, okay, yep. And, and here, this particular one, subject to compliance with any and all relevant conditions set forth in prior approvals and in the comment letters from city departments, boards, and commissions, specifically condition number two, described in the letter from Parking and Traffic Commission dated July twelve, twenty thousand, twenty-eighteen, which is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference.
Okay.
I believe that's all.
Are you seconding it?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Flannery. I have a second-
Sure.
-by Mr. Miller. Now we can open it up for discussion. Mr. Miller?
One of the previous conditions states, "One of the parking spaces located in the parking area shall be designated as a handicap parking space and include pavement markings and signage consistent with ADA." That's no longer applies, right? Because-
Right. Because that references a parking space onsite.
So that condition should be struck.
In the letter.
Yes, and-
Hold on, hold on.
No, no, no.
I thought the new letter-
No, no, in the new letter, it indicates.
The new letter referenced the handicap parking spot.
Oh, it did?
It does?
Yep.
I thought so.
No, well, let me, let me back up. No, Wayne is, I think Wayne is right, because you incorporated specifically condition number two, described in the letter from PNTC, July twelfth, twenty-eighteen, which is-
Right, it is.
Which is the, the onsite handicap parking space. And since the parking spaces are being removed-
Yes.
-that condition number two, Wayne, do you have condition number two there?
I do.
From the, from the July twelfth?
Mm-hmm.
Can you read that, please?
From the previous one?
From the July twelfth, twenty-eighteen.
Yes.
Parking and traffic.
That reads, "One of the parking spaces located in the parking area shall be designated as a handicap parking space and include pavement markings and signage consistent with ADA standards."
No, well, actually, it could, it could stand, right? Because it references parking area, which doesn't necessarily reference that the parking area is on the site where-
If we accept the new letter, it-
Madam Chair?
It goes into the handicap parking space in front.
Okay, you're right.
It's right here, Madam Chair, on the new letter.
So the new, the new stipulation of ADA parking would supersede the previous one?
Right, yes.
It would replace it.
It would replace it.
We don't have to clarify that any further?
No, because I indicated, I indicated both letters in my motion, Wayne.
And the twenty-eighteen comment that the project proponent will arrange for off-site parking, I think that too should be struck at this point. Probably, I don't know, if we want to keep that verbiage that they arrange, what does that mean? Does that mean they're obligated to pay for off-site parking? That they have to coordinate off-site parking? I don't know what it means. And neither does the proponent. So do we strike that? And instead write, "Project proponent will ensure that all employees are informed that parking spaces contiguous to the project site are not to be utilized while, by employees, while the tap room is open to the, excuse me, is open to the public." Should we just, it's confusing and unclear to the proponent. Should we just strike it and rewrite it? So that it is clear? I ask.
I mean, what, I thought Darlene mentioned that there's now a program. Can we require participation in the program? Is there already required participation in the program?
Have we ever required that anybody, put their employees in that program and pay for them?
There isn't.
That would be unique. I don't think we've ever done such a thing.
So I think what, let me back up. What Wayne is saying is, strike the will arrange language of the condition in the twenty-eighteen parking and traffic condition, which was incorporated into our decision, and replace it with your very eloquent piece that you just read there, which was talking about making sure that the employees are not parking in those three or four parking spaces.
That's a parking.
Which Emily, I think you said was the original intent of that condition anyway.
Correct, and I can't speak to whether the board has ever required participation in the program, but-
Nor-
I don't, I don't think that was the intent.
No, but that's how it reads now. It kind of reads that way. It's very unclear. Do we, are we saying that they utilize the MBTA garage? Do we, are they expected to pay for that?
No, I think-
Or supposed to recommend that they go park in the garage? I don't know what that means.
I think, I think your perspective is accurate, that those conditions are simply considered null and void based on the fact that there is a new letter from Parking and Traffic Commission with specific conditions and, and you could-
But it doesn't address that.
Wait a minute, wait.
Not null and void, never mind.
But it doesn't address that arranging for off-site parking at all in the new letter? It's not referenced.
Yeah, no, listen, I, I'm reluctant to, strike all of the conditions in the twenty-eighteen parking and traffic. I have no problem with what you're saying, Wayne, because it perfectly aligns with what the applicant, Mr. Smith and Mr., is it Gary?
Gary.
Were stating. It corresponds directly with what Emily was stating, was as to her opinion of, of the intention of that condition. So, but I don't want to be, I don't want us striking down the rest of the conditions from twenty-eighteen.
I think there are only two.
Well, okay, then.
I think there are-
What do I know?
Two from twenty-eighteen.
Well, but by-
Oh, gosh.
By stating, "Subject to compliance to any and all relevant conditions that were set forth in prior approvals," you're sort of umbrella-ing.
Oh, no, no. When you say relevant, the little lawyer, and you must have the same reaction, Andrea, sends up a huge red flag, because relevant means vague, it means litigation, it means multiple interpretations.
So there were two, two, two conditions in twenty-eighteen, if I read this correctly. And I'm not a lawyer, believe me.
Lucky.
Two, two, the following conditions, of which there are two. And one is, the project proponent will arrange for off-site parking, and the other is, one of the parking spaces will be ADA. Those are the only two conditions I see here. One of them is clearly incorporated in the new letter, so fine, that does obviate the need to strike the other one, because it just supersedes it.
I thought there might be more.
But if we re, we can't reword the twenty-eighteen verbiage, we can't rewrite it, but we could strike it and-
Yes.
Substitute for it, which is what I suggest we do. There's a-
Yes.
Clear lack of clarity in, in the previous condition, which I was a party to.
So I think, I think that would be an amended motion on the part of Ms. Flannery.
Mended and restated, yep.
It would.
All right, what else?
I can share with the amendment.
Rodney, did you have a point?
No, I, I think, I mean, that issue, that was a subject of a huge conversation, so I think making that clear is, is worth it. We've heard from everybody the intent behind it, so I think we're good.
Okay.
So it would be incorporating the previous, all previous conditions and adding the condition that employee parking shall not be constituted from adjacent on-street parking?
I think-
I'll go back and, I'll go back and listen to your-
I think you have to strike the previous conditions.
I think you're striking the conditions-
Conditions, yep.
Okay.
I don't know.
You're striking the conditions from the twenty-eighteen letter.
So simply not including that.
Yep. We're including the conditions from this twenty-twenty-one parking and traffic.
Yep.
And we're adding Wayne's language.
If you strike both prior conditions, you haven't lost anything, because one of them is back in with the new letter, and the other is, she's about to add in as a condition. So that puts back the two conditions.
Right.
One by superseding with the new letter, and the second by the insertion of what you're about to add. So we haven't lost any conditions, we've just modified one of them.
Yeah.
And the other, we haven't really touched at all.
All right, is there anything else?
What is the new condition?
Can you read your language again, Wayne, and read it slowly, please?
Sure. If you could see this hand script. "Project proponent will ensure that all employees are informed that parking spaces contiguous to the project site," I think that's the right term, "are not utilized while the tap room is open to the public." And could, I guess contiguous, I don't know how to say out front.
Yeah, contiguous works, I think.
Close enough. I mean, it's not like they're on the side or behind, they're touching that way. The only ones that do touch are out front, so that makes them contiguous, I guess.
I think that's right.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Emily, why are there two different letters from the Parking Commission? One's on the thirteenth, one's on the sixteenth.
So the thirteenth was a draft, and the sixteenth was signed. There's no difference except for the date and the signature.
So the sixteenth is the-
Okay, maybe we should weigh in with the proponent who was out there in virtual land in six-
Waiting for us.
Whether he'd be willing to go along with this point.
Waiting for us with the decision.
I would say that language is very clear, if that's what you're asking.
I am.
All right.
Yep.
All right, so is it-
That was the initial of like how we interpreted it the first time, but I think making it clear is great.
Making it clear. Making it clear, gentlemen.
All right, anything else, folks?
I'm good.
Anything else, guys? Okay. Emily, anything else? All right. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes eight-zero. Go in peace.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys, for being here.
I'll come down and have a-
Very welcome, gentlemen. We'll be down.
What did he say?
Still open?
They'll be closed, but that's-
We'll be going for coffee.
The next agenda item-
That's exhausting.
Is number four, modification to site plan review fifty-five dash ninety-nine, eighty-five San Ponzo Drive. The applicant is CM&amp;B Inc., Care of Hancock Associates.
Good evening. I'm Charlie Ware with Hancock Associates. And Emily, I don't know if you could put the plan up, it would be helpful.
Sir, can I ask you to keep your voice up, please?
Sure. We're here this evening. This was a, I think it was an insurance office building. I forget the exact square footage of the building, I think it's about thirty thousand square feet. CM&amp;B has recently purchased this property. CM&amp;B is a general contractor. The use is not changing. The insurance is certainly, it's a different company, but as general contractor, this site will be used as an office building. It won't be a construction yard. It's the, it really, construction administrators than, say, a general contractor when you think of, you know, personnel and machinery. So that's not what this is. This is strictly an office building, and it's an exact use of what has been used in the past as an office building. The reason we're here tonight is we are proposing some changes to this plan. And actually, Emily, I don't know if you could, that's, that's actually the architectural plan that's up there right now. It's a little, yeah, there's the one. And it's difficult to see it too, isn't it? There is, there are two entryways. That's really the primary reason for, for us being here tonight. But this, they're, they're proposing a number of other small changes as well. Where they are moving into this building, they're proposing really a number of maintenance issues. One of the things which isn't on this plan is there, for example, they're going to grind and repave, which is really a maintenance issue, and I don't think that this board really needs to approve that. We do have approval from the Conservation Commission to do that. But they, I think the primary reason we're here tonight is there's two driveways. It's a little bit hard to see here, but on the bottom of the page, you see there's a driveway in the bottom that leads into a small circle and a drop-off area. The front of the building is really kind of to the side. It's not on the street side. The street side is to the left of this page. There's also a second entrance to a parking lot, which is, which is on the front side of the building, on the street side of the building, is probably a better way to say it. There is access all the way around the building, and what we would like to do is close that entrance and put lawn there. The, the CM&amp;B feels strongly that the, that they, that primary entrance, that they're going to use the parking lot to the rear of the building, and that the parking to the front of the building is, is not going to be used, perhaps at all. They think that the parking to the rear of the building is sufficient for their needs. The site is overparked based upon zoning. I think it's got about seventeen additional spaces than are required by zoning. We are proposing, as part of closing that driveway, to, to stripe out two spaces that are going to be difficult to get into, so that would drop it by two spaces. There's also a number of, well, before I get too far, we've also spoken with engineering and with the fire department, and they've both issued, they've both issued emails saying that they have no, take no exception with these changes. There are a number of other small changes. We're proposing in the, where it really is, it's off the page a little bit, but the top right-hand side of the site, there's, there are residences on that side. So we want to put in a stockade fence along that property to provide additional screening. There's actually pretty good vegetative screening in that area, but we do want to put that stockade fence along that line to provide additional screening for the, for the neighbors in that area. We are proposing, there's no dumpster on this site currently, and we are proposing just off the, the right rear, in fact, I, hold on, let me grab, I've got a- The, the building is right here. We're proposing a dumpster right in this location. That dumpster will be on a pad which is on top of existing parking spaces, so there's a loss of two other parking spaces, but again, we're, we're overparked by about seventeen. So that, that dumpster will be enclosed in a, in a fence to obscure it, and then we're proposing a second fence in this area, so we're, you know, we're, again, I think we're being considerate of the neighbors in that, in that area. Additionally, there's the island, which is at the bottom right now, there's kind of three, kind of sorry-looking, small trees in that island, and we're going to take those out, and we're going to replace those. We want to put a flagpole in that island, as well as a lot of perennial plantings, and we've got details on the plan of what we'd like to do, perennial plants, as well as some junipers in there. And we, we just, it's really an aesthetic, we think it'll be a vast improvement over what's there today. In addition, there's, there is these islands, these internal islands in the parking lot, they're, they've undergone, and actually, it's, it's not an issue that, that I've addressed on this plan, but we are going to repair. Those islands have been really damaged, this by two minutes berms, which have been, which have been damaged, and we're planning on fixing that. One thing we had to, we're planning on this tree, it's not a terribly large tree, and I'm, I'm an engineer, I'm not sure what the, what type of tree it is, but that tree is growing into the parking lot and is destroying the pavement in and around the island. It was a wrong, whatever species it is, it was the wrong choice of species, because it has a very shallow root system. So our architect has, they're saying to replace that with a, a spring snow crab apple, which has, apparently has a deeper root system and won't, and won't continue to destroy the parking. In addition, I know this list is getting long, and I'm asking for a minor modification, there's a large area of, this is the front door of the building, even though it's on the side, there's a large concrete plaza in this area, and what we want to do is remove quite a bit of that concrete and replace it with, with, with a lawn area, so we're actually trying to make it a bit more green. And the, it's the same way with the entrance, we're removing pavement, replacing that with a, with a lawn as well. And then the last piece is this, there was a doorway that comes out of the building right here, and right now, there's a, it's a walkway, it's below grade, so you really, it's hard to see this, but the, the walkway empties out to the parking. What this does, there is about a, about a three-foot climb up to the parking as you move in this direction, so we want to put some steps right here, so that people leaving here don't have to walk all the way out, that they can walk up those steps to get to the parking here. The, the client, CM&amp;B, is probably going to use this parking area more for, you know, kind of an, an area for pers, for people to go outside and have lunch. They're not really thinking about using, they don't think they need the parking area anymore, but they want to provide for access out to that. So you will not see those steps from the street down over the, the drop in grade, so there won't be any change in appearance to the building, and we think that the, the landscaping we're proving is, is an improvement, and, and we don't, the discussions we've had with engineering and with fire, that, that closing the, closing that second access point does not cause any problems for this site. I think that covers everything.
And I would also, I would just note that I shared the email from the fire department. I just received the email from the engineering department today. It states, after a quick review, I have no concerns with closing the entrance, there does not seem to be any practical engineering matters, and in fact, this reduces the total pervious surface area of the site. I just advise evaluating the lot drainage to ensure all stormwater is captured appropriately and mitigated with best management practices. If any utilities are located in proximity of the area, please ensure care is taken to minimize impact. Any service boxes raised to grade and/or manholes raised to grade.
Okay, are there questions for the applicant? Wayne?
Eric? Go ahead, buddy. Let's start with the easy one.
That's fine.
There's no fencing currently anywhere around the property?
Um, there's actually fencing to the front of the site, and then for whatever reasons, there was no fencing to the rear.
Front of the site, I guess
Um, when I say front, I'm, I'm showing it on this
I think you mean the southeast.
Yeah, is that where I'm showing with the pointer right now? There is fencing
The doorway north is on that picture.
I think that's more northeast.
Charlie, this is Len Cubellis, second vice president with CM&amp;B. There, there is fencing along that back property line, we're just extending it.
Yeah, that's, that's, and that's, you can't see it. Len Cubellis is, is a vice president with CM&amp;B, he's at, he's this six-one-seven-nine-two number, and Len, what I'm doing is, that's exactly what I'm doing, is pointing out with a pointer, with a laser pointer where that fence is.
Okay.
Did you mention what kind of activity will be, will be taking place here?
Yes, it's a, they're general contractors, and it's an office use. There was, there was originally a, it was originally an insurance company that was in here. CM&amp;B are general contractors, but this is not to be confused with like as a contractor's yard, this is strictly an office building, and that will be the use as an office building.
I see. So you won't have particularly heavy lift of energy requirements here?
That's, that's not what they do. They're, they're, they're construction managers, so this is, this is strictly a, they're an office, they're an office building, they manage construction, but they don't have heavy machinery, nor do they, would they ever store anything like that on this site. They wouldn't use this site for staging, this, these are, these folks are strictly construction managers.
So you'll have a
They also add, we're presently located at seventy-five Silbon Street in Gambers. It's an office building, and it's just, it's just administrative offices. There's no, no equipment located on the site at all.
That's
We don't own any equipment.
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And the, you mentioned the dumpsters, so I have to ask, is, will you incorporate recycling as well as trash?
Len, can you, could, I assume that you have a recycling program?
We do. We presently do, and we would continue that on the site.
Okay, and finally, I think you discussed the parking somewhat, it seems like you'll have quite an excess of parking?
That's correct.
Over what you'll be required?
Yeah, I'm not sure why the number of spaces were here, that are here, were constructed, but it was probably the insurance company just had, wanted more spaces than what was required by zoning. CM&amp;B feels like the site is overparked, even for their uses, so that's why there's an excess of almost seventeen spaces on the site for, for zoning, and for CM, CM&amp;B's purposes, they feel like there's even more of an excess than that.
Yeah. I, nothing particularly offends me about any of this.
Oh, that's good, that's, that was what we're hoping.
But I, but I, but I, I do have to kind of reflect on your comment that there's a lot of things in aggregate to, to think of this as a minor.
Yeah, but if you look at them each individually, they're all very small, number one, and number two, this is a new, you know, when you move into a new home, you put up new curtains and you paint the walls. I'd like to, you know, I'd like to make the argument that this is the case, that they're, they're not really changing things here. This is really just a new owner coming in and, and, you know, moving into their building.
No, a lot of these too are repairs.
That's correct.
And the primary thing that requires the planning board's review is the replacement of the secondary egress with, with grass.
Yep, thank you.
Are there questions, Derek?
Yes, actually, the, the replacement of the secondary egress is, I, I understand, that's where my, most, most of my question is about this. I understand the fire department's weighed in, but we're talking about a large, how many employees roughly? How many people will be in this building?
Len, can you answer that question?
Yes, we, we employ fifty people in the Gambers office. We would not anticipate any significant growth beyond ten, twelve people over the next
Fifty.
Seven years.
Fifty?
Did you see
Tiny a space on that main
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing on that. How many people?
We, we employ fifty people right now.
Fifty. Okay, fifty, thank you.
I thought you said fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
I thought, where are they going to go?
We're putting them on the roof.
But it just seems to me that, and I know the fire department is concerned about being able to get in, get around the building, but a second, in a fairly large building, a second egress for employees who are in a building that, or have to move their vehicles, things like that. I mean, it just seems curious to me, but I guess it looks bigger than it really is, if it's fifty people. What's the, what's the square footage of the building itself?
I don't have it, it's
I have it, it's just less than twenty-eight thousand square feet.
Twenty-eight thousand?
The footprint?
No, the footprint is half of that.
Okay.
It's a two-story building.
Okay, fourteen thousand. Okay, so that was, that was my, my major question was just the elimination of that, is that for security purposes? Is it for maintenance purposes?
It's, you know, they, they want to direct their employees to the, you know, to the front of the building, with, which is really on the side. They want to direct people to there, that's where the doorway is, and they, you know, they, they really don't want to use that parking lot, they don't think that it's needed, and so they want to close that off, so that if it, if it, if it ever is needed, people could still drive around the building to get there, but they really want to direct their employees and any potential, you know, clients or customers that come to that building, to the parking lot that's in behind the building. And the best way to get them there is to, is to direct them via the, that other driveway.
Okay. I could ask a lot more questions, but not tonight.
Ms. Flannery?
No, I was just going to say, Madam Chair, thank you. I was there today, Derek, and when you drive up San Fonsel Drive, when you're looking at the building, it's at an angle, so the entrance that they're proposing is to maybe the natural entrance.
Yep.
That second is literally an egress. It's on the other side of it, I wouldn't even think to go in that way.
Okay.
Because you're facing, facing the way you'd come up there.
Yep.
Coming off of San Fonsel. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Chair.
Rodney?
I apologize if you already said this, I, what I'm thinking about, so I can't get information in when I'm trying to think, so. I see two, you're losing two parking spaces for the dumpster. Did you say where the, the other two were going?
The other two, with the, with the closing of this driveway, you can see that there's, there's actually two spaces right here as well, that you really can't get an in and out of those spaces anymore with the closing of the driveway, so we're just striping those out. So that would be the loss of the other two spaces.
Are there questions, comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, hearing none, our determination is, make this off, to first make a determination as to whether these proposed changes are minor in nature. What is the wish of the board?
And Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that the proposed modification to site plan review application number five-five dash nine-nine at eighty-five San Fonsel Drive, on behalf of CM&amp;B Inc., is minor in nature.
I have a motion, is there a second, please? Seconded by Ms. Flannery. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Question now is to, is to approve or disapprove of these changes?
I'd like to make a motion. Madam Chair, however, I'm looking for the letter from the city engineer. Do we have a reference to that? Is it in the packet?
It's not in the packet, but if you'd like
Emily has it here.
Make a reference to the email, the letter via email dated
August seventeen.
August seventeen, twenty twenty-one.
Seventeen. And just my, for my own edification, are there any other conditions and any other letters or notifications?
Consco.
There is a letter provided by the Conservation Commission, however, there are no, or the Conservation Agent, however, there are no conditions attached to that. It's just for the board's edification on the process that's being followed. And there is an email or letter from the fire department, and again, no conditions, just stating there are no concerns.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that the Planning Board approve the modification to site plan review application number fifty-five dash ninety-nine, eighty-five San Fonsel Drive, on behalf of CM&amp;B Incorporated. Do I need to delineate all of these? Just a question here?
No, it's, it's in their application.
Okay. And with the conditions outlined by the city engineer in the email to the Planning Board dated August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, and also for, that the decision also include copies of the letter we received from the Conservation Commission dated August eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, and from the fire department dated August sixteenth? What was the date of that letter?
The email one?
August twelfth.
Twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
I have a motion by Mr. Beckwith, is there a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Brendan? No. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. No, not the roll, just the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes eight zero.
I appreciate the board's time, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Ware.
Easier motion than Alan.
Oh my gosh, these have all been bears.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump. Mr. Alexander, your, your agenda item is under new business?
Yes, Ms. Flannery.
Would, I'm going to ask you to present, please?
As you probably recall, at the last Planning Board meeting, the, the board approved the waiver of frontage subdivision plan for seventy-five Livingston Ave, and so we are seeking endorsement of that plan tonight. We are not, as is ordinary with subdivision approval plans, we usually submit either a bond or a covenant to ensure that the work that is done pursuant to the subdivision approval, which usually involves a roadway and utilities, to make sure that that's done. In this particular case, there is no roadway, there's an existing roadway. You may recall going back, well, for maybe eight, ten years ago, this used to be done by way of an A and R, but for some reason, a case came down that said we had to do a full waiver of frontage subdivision approval, but, so, and at the end of the day, it, it kind of looks like, and acts like an A and R, but it actually is not an A and R, but we have to go through this process, and so But we have to go through this process, and so the long and short of it is, I respectfully request that the board endorse this plan without the requirement of a covenant or a bond, because there is no work to be done to create a roadway for it.
Questions for Mr. Alexander? Seems pretty straightforward. Hearing no questions, I would welcome a motion on this, please. He just laid it right out for us. He like a fastball down the middle of the plate.
Yep.
Let's hope that somebody hits that ball.
He's seeking an endorsement of the plan without the requirement of a covenant or a bond.
Madam Chair, I'm looking for the reference to the plan number, et cetera, et cetera. I don't have it.
Is there a reference to your plan?
Because it's under new business, and I think it wasn't included.
Okay. That's why we can't find it.
So I'm not sure how to make a motion on something I can't reference.
I'll always note here. It is the definitive subdivision plan and waiver from frontage requirements for 75 Livingston Avenue by Paul R. Lapenna. Do you like the decision letter?
Yes.
Yeah.
You didn't bring it with you, Terry? What?
And it's a waiver from covenant or bond?
Yes.
Or without the requirement of a covenant or bond.
Madam Chair, I move that in the matter of the definitive subdivision plan and waiver from frontage requirements for 75 Livingston Avenue, Paul R. Lapenna, Michael C. Lapenna, Nancy J. Hadley, and Joanne Hallhouse, that the board waive the requirement for a covenant or a bond for this project.
And that we endorse the plan.
And endorse the plan.
Oh, beautiful. I've got a second by Ms. Flannery. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes eight-zero.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have to set a public hearing for site plan review, 152-21, 572 Essex Street. The trustees of the reservation... Do we have much on our September 22nd agenda?
No.
May I respectfully suggest to members of the board that that would be a grand time for that?
So moved, Madam Chair?
Second.
All right. All in favor? All opposed? Passes. So that's... Public hearing is set for 9:22. Chelsea, I pay you $100 if you just say you'll come back later. No, I'm just kidding.
Double it. Double it. Double it. Double it.
I'll make it so big. I've been here for four hours.
I know. I know.
I can't believe you had to sit there for...
Did you even bring a snack for yourself?
Bottom of the agenda.
Me neither.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's your turn.
If you could just put these slides up. My name is Chelsea Zakkis. I am the associate planner here in the planning department. I am wearing my open space hat tonight. I staff the open space and recreation committee, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about the open space and recreation plan update that we will be working on over the next year. So there are some slides. I can talk as we go through them if you would go to the next slide, please. So what is the open space and recreation plan? For those of you who are less familiar or totally unfamiliar, the plan is a living document that gets updated every seven years. It describes the geographic character of Beverly, the landscape character. It goes into the environmental resources and challenges, as well as growth and development patterns which may affect open space and recreation and vice versa. And then the bulk of the plan discusses the community's goals and vision for the future of Beverly's open space and recreation. And then lastly, the end of the plan is an action plan, a seven-year action plan that offers objectives and actions that will be taken to achieve those goals that are set. Next slide, please. So why is the plan important? It is important for several reasons. Through a community engagement process, the plan reflects the needs of the community. It acts as a guiding tool moving forward that will meet future projected demands. It gives the city the ability to keep track of accomplishments that are made and to stay on top of priorities. And it is required by the Division of Conservation Services, that does say department, should say division, to receive certain grants. So without an approved plan, you cannot apply for or receive specific grants through DCS, including the park grant that was used to acquire the land of Camp Paradise, just as an example. Next slide, please. So this is just very broadly the work plan and timeline. Over the next year, we will be reviewing, hesitant to say relevant, documents and plans, including the master plan, previous open space and recreation plans. We will be going through a public engagement process that includes a preliminary survey that will be widely distributed. We will be having a public meeting. We will also be setting up a table at at least one Beverly festival. And then additional and enhanced outreach will be done in environmental justice communities. Oh, sorry. Keep... Almost done. So then a lot of time is devoted to formatting and editing a draft document. That includes working with the city's GIS administrator to prepare maps that are desired and required in the plan, formatting, editing, writing, reviewing the document over and over again. That is a huge group effort.
Look at crap.
That is a huge group effort, and so that is why I'm carving out a lot of time for reviewing and editing purposes. I do expect that a full draft will be complete by around April to May of next year for review by departments, commissions, and boards. And then the final plan is due to the Division of Conservation Services by August of 2022. Next slide. So how you can be involved, the open space and recreation committee is primarily responsible for preparing and updating the open space and recreation plan. As ward-specific and city-at-large representatives, they are tasked with developing the goals and the vision for the plan, but that is with input that is gathered through public engagement and feedback from other boards and committees such as yourself. And so these are just suggestions as to how you may like to be involved over the next year by providing input on the goals and objectives in the plan that, when that time comes, that they're developed. Also reviewing and commenting on sections of the plan, including the draft that will be for this current plan we're working on, but also reviewing and commenting on the plan that was approved in 2016, providing updates and feedback on that would be extremely helpful. And then the greatest help would be spreading the word about community engagement opportunities when those details get finalized. That's all I have tonight, still in the beginning of this process and going around to various boards and commissions this month and next month to introduce the plan. And I would really appreciate any sort of suggestions that you all have or questions.
Questions for Chelsea? Comments? Chelsea, I feel terrible that you've been here for four hours and we're sort of... We clearly raced you through this.
It is okay.
We would love to have you come back.
I can be back. So what might be beneficial is we could share the plan with the board and note specific sections that may be relevant.
Yeah.
And then we could potentially have a discussion.
Yes.
Emily, that'd be great. That'd be great.
Yeah.
We would put you first.
Yeah.
You don't have to do that. It's fine.
Might send us the link to the prior plan?
Yes, absolutely.
We have an idea what...
I'll send that out. It's on the city website.
Derek, did you have a question?
Yeah, I actually did. I just... It caught my eye. So could you give a couple of examples of environmental justice communities?
Yeah, absolutely. So I actually wrote down the definition that the Office of Environmental and Energy Affairs So I'll read it. So environmental justice is based on the principle that all people have a right to be protected from environmental hazards and to live in and enjoy a clean and healthful environment. It is the equal protection and meaningful involvement of all people with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies, and the equitable distribution of environmental benefits. And so environmental justice communities in Massachusetts are determined at the census tract level based on certain criteria on median household income, minority population, and English language proficiency. And there are, I don't know exactly how many census tracts, but there's a, maybe at least five or six census tracts, some smaller than others, and, oh, that's it. That's the interactive map is offered online through the Division of Conservation Services. And so these census tracts in the green, yellow, and dark green in Beverly are considered environmental justice communities. And so as is required and desired by the open space and recreation committee, we will do enhanced public outreach around those areas.
Who determines the EJ?
The state.
State.
Yeah, it is.
You may, if you look really close, you'll see that Brackenbury Lane is in there.
Oh, I know. No. I looked at it, and it is bizarre. Really? This is a very large census tract here, so it includes a very upscale population and some more lower-income groups. So the yellow is minority. The light green is based on income, and the dark green is based on minority and income populations. And they compare it to the state data as a whole, so median household income in that census tract compared to the states. And the states is pretty high.
I know. It's crazy.
So you have Turtle Woods and Turtle Creek in this larger census tract.
That makes sense.
And you have a few other housing developments.
I'm in one. I get to be in one.
Does that drive it down that much? Because if it's a median...
Median.
Yep. So you're also looking at, what, like Yankee Way and...
There are eight or $10 million houses.
I'm just so sad those people are hurting. I didn't know.
I think I can speak on behalf of the committee in Wayne as well, that we will absolutely consider other factors and not only rely on the census tracts, but rely on what longtime residents know as areas that would benefit from enhanced outreach.
So surprised.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Other questions? Comments, Chelsea? Chelsea, please come back.
You can come back when we're fresh.
I will.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Seriously, you'll be first on the list.
Oh, my gosh. It's okay. Thank you, though.
No, thank you, Chelsea. We don't have any new business, right?
We have two other small things. So we have received a request to...
Oh, I forgot.
Yep. So it's a letter from Globski &amp; Globski to withdraw the special permit application only for 143 Brimble Ave. So they are retaining their site plan review application.
Another one. Thank you.
Sorry. They're retaining their site plan review application, but they would like to withdraw their special permit application. And given that they would also like to submit an additional legal advertisement to be shared between now and the September meeting, so they would like to respectfully ask the board to approve the withdrawal of the special permit at this meeting.
Okay, so I welcome a motion on this.
Yes. Move that the board accept the withdrawal without prejudice of special permits number 180-21 for 143 Brimble Ave.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Flannery. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
I guess I'll make sure. So last new business that's actually on the agenda is just a very quick update on zoning changes. Planning Department is continuing to work with Mayor's Office and the Sustainability Department on the Bass River District. And so just to note, it's coming. Shall we move on?
Sure. I'd welcome a motion to adjourn.
You want to do the minutes and what next?
We're going to do the minutes next.
All right.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? We're out of here. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for making it through.
Woo! I feel better.
This is a little tasty.